Thank you, Jonathan. Good morning, everyone. Jennifer, would you please take the role?
For the state comptroller, Ms. Picklin. For the superintendent of public instruction, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Prazan. Ms. Yamamoto. Ms. Higa. Ms. Bradford. Ms. Erdin. The state treasurer, Mr. Rafino. Chairperson Keely, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
And would you like me to read the statement about public comments now or later?
That would be great if you read it now. Thank you.
Great. The CalSTRS board meetings are a live web stream, video archive, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the board should dial into the public comment line at 833-986-0555 and wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the caller wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each caller is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. However, if there is not enough time for each caller to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the chair. To protect the privacy of callers under the age of 18 who wish to address the board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information, such as their last name, age, or school, may not be shared.
Thank you, Ms. Yamamoto. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda for today with some flexibility. Moved and properly seconded. Without objection, the agenda has been approved with flexibility. We are now going to adjourn out of open session. We're going into closed session. Estimated time for closed session is 75 minutes. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Jonathan. We're back in open session of the regular board meeting. Before we continue with our business, a couple of things. A thank you to all the staff that has supported the board in our work while we've been working online during the pandemic and for your continued support as we come back to meeting in person. A big shout out and a thanks to the 1,200 employees of CalSTRS that have not missed a beat, have continued to take in contributions, invest that money, and pay benefits through one of the most trying times in all of our history. We thank you for your continued work and service on behalf of our members. We're thrilled to be back in the CalSTRS board meeting, a beautiful facility. We're thrilled to see all of the members of staff that are here today, and we can't wait for the date when we see more and more of our members back in the building, working with us. And as Mr. Prazan talked about it, the governance committee also embracing the best of what technology has brought to us to look for opportunities where we can work both remotely and back in person. So it's terrific to be back. With that, we'll continue our agenda and we'll turn it over to our chief executive officer, Cassandra Licknow. Cassandra?
Thank you, Chair Keely. I'm just gonna do a little bit of the update on the CEO report and hand it over to my colleagues to do the remainder of the update that is incorporated in the material itself. I wanted to just acknowledge the appointment of our chief administrative officer position, Melissa Norsia. She was appointed to the role on September 15th, 2021, and replaces our COO, Lisa Blatnick. So we had some really fantastic succession that has gone on in the organization, advancing some of those individuals who have been working at the organization for quite some time. Melissa, in her new role, takes on the human resources procurement, facilities, and business continuity and sustainability. And she really partners with our chief operating officer, myself, and our fellow executives in advancing the initiatives of CalPERS strategic plans. The other appointment that I wanted to highlight is the appointment of a really important position in the organization, and it's our director of human resources. And that appointment has been filled by Crystal Turco, and I asked her to be here today, and you can stand up and wave. She doesn't want to stand up, she's gonna wave. So she was selected as the director of human resources effective October 18th, and she obviously replaces Melissa. But she's been working for CalSTRS for 10 years. She was working in human resources when I was in human resources. So we have a longstanding relationship with she and I, and Melissa and I. We worked together for a long time and have been working on CalSTRS compensation policies and supporting the board for quite some time. So you were in good hands with all of those issues with Crystal taking on that role. The other thing that I wanted to just hand over to was the ombuds report. We have an ombuds that replaced Tom Barrett, and this is Mark Genie. He started this role last year, and he provides a report every November on the data and statistics that have been transpiring through the ombuds office. And so he's gonna provide that report to you.
Everyone, as Cassandra said, my name is Mark Genie, and I am the CalSTRS ombuds. Thank you for having me. I've worked with CalSTRS since 2007 in a variety of customer service and benefit area roles. I assumed the ombuds position in January of this year, and I'm very excited to be here to share with you my first annual ombuds report. So as the ombuds, I provide assistance in resolving problems and conflicts that aren't solved through the usual communication channels at CalSTRS. The position was established in 1984, and it serves as an advocate for our members and participants. And my office is accessible, and we receive complaints through a variety of ways, including an online inquiry form through calstrs.com, direct mail, director transfer phone calls, and referrals from our legislative staff and stakeholder groups. Now, my office is only comprised of two staff, myself and the ombuds coordinator. And this past year was a year of transition for us. I assumed the role in January following the retirement of Tom Barrett, and he had provided exceptional leadership for this program since 2002. And Patty Clark was the ombuds coordinator, and she was a tremendous asset for bridging the gap between Tom and myself. But she also retired in September, and we have a new coordinator starting her third week on the job, Christina Nguyen. She is a seasoned CalSTRS employee, and this is gonna be a great fit for the coordinator role. So in addition to the change of people, we also made a name change to the position in the program. As you get know, at CalSTRS, we encourage a diverse and inclusive business culture. And in support of this goal, we decided to change the name of my position to a gender-neutral term of ombuds, and the division is now known as Office of the Ombuds. I know it might sound a little weird, but it is an acceptable and actually the standard term amongst the professional association groups out there. Also during this year, I'm very excited to announce that we implemented four guiding principles of practice, and these principles were derived from professional standards established by the International Ombuds Association and the United States Ombudsman Association, and they really reflect a commitment to ethical conduct and to maintain the integrity of the Office of the Ombuds. So the four principles are: one, independence, in that I'm independent in structure and function to the highest degree possible at CalSTRS; two is impartiality, in that I'm designated as neutral and will not engage in any situation that creates a conflict of interest; three is confidentiality, in that I hold all communication with those seeking my assistance and strict confidence as required by statutes and policy; and four is informality, in that I don't make binding decisions. I don't mandate policies, nor do I formally adjudicate issues for CalSTRS. I supplement, but I do not replace the formal complaint channels that we currently have. So in our report for this year, we do provide a lot of data, and you can see that data beginning on page three of the CEO report. We received 288 total contacts during the year, and this was a decrease compared to the prior three years. Business areas have been doing a great job providing services to our members, and that often correlates to less grievances by our membership. Also, there is collaboration with business areas just due to the interconnected nature of the member experience. And while I do strive to provide a resolution independently, these complex cases often require I have to collaborate with other divisions. So of the 288 total cases, a little more than a third require I have to collaborate with divisions within CalSTRS. Majority of contacts that I receive are from those in benefit status, specifically receiving a service retirement benefit, and then the next highest group are those active in the defined benefit program. Most of our contacts originate through an inquiry submission form through online on calstrs.com, and the second most is through referrals from business areas within CalSTRS, the most coming from the contact center, which shouldn't be a surprise. We also have a few referrals from employers, the legislature, and a couple referred from board members themselves. There are also common themes of the contacts, which I think can be considered natural as members transition from active employment to benefit status. Top cases are related to service retirement calculations, survivor benefit issues, and employer reporting. So in closing, I just want to stress that I provide an alternate channel of communication for all members and constituents to bring forward and resolve issues. With the tracking of these cases, it's an opportunity to provide feedback to leadership to proactively address service delivery issues that our membership brings to my attention. I can serve as an early warning system for CalSTRS to identify trends and systemic matters to help successfully manage risks. And I'm committed to serving our members in a capacity that reflects our four guiding principles: independence, impartiality, confidentiality, and informality. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have on the report.
Thank you, Mr. Genie. Mr. Rafino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. And you alluded to that you got a couple referrals from board members, and they may have been from our office, I'm not sure. But we did make some referral, and you handle it extremely professional, and I wanted to thank you for that. In fact, you went above and beyond. I think there was an issue about printing or something. I'm not sure if they needed to be printed by the comptroller's office or who or why, it didn't matter. You went above and beyond, and you did it. And when we did a follow-up, the constituents was extremely happy with your involvement and your assistance. So welcome to CalSTRS. Thank you for your service, and please continue that excellent service to our members and constituents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rafino. Turn it back to Cassandra.
Thank you, Mark. The next part of the CEO report I'm gonna hand over to Lisa to give you an update on the headquarters expansion project.
Thanks, Cassandra. Just a few highlights on the written materials. I want to start off by saying I know how important this project is to the board, to CalSTRS staff, and to our members, and I want to make sure that you understand that it's super important to us as well, and we're managing this project to our best ability to make sure we can come to a successful conclusion. I just want to provide a few highlights based on the written materials that I provided you. So we have experienced a five-month delay on the project, and this is due in part to being in the permitting process much longer than anybody anticipated. This delay will require all of our contractors to stay on the project longer, and the project has incurred cost escalations for materials based on the delayed completion date. With the issuance of the fourth permit and interior construction starting to commence, we're now seeing some challenges in the field. So we're seeing some challenges with the inspections on some of the important critical path items on the project. And I'm happy to report that Cassandra and I just spent the last hour in the trailers, construction trailers, with the Office of the State Fire Marshal, talking through some of the problems that we've had on the project so far in the field, and we've come to a really good resolution on the first issue that we've come to, and that's the hanging of the curtain wall. There's a condition in the curtain wall that's gonna require a third-party assessment of the way the curtain wall connects, which is the skin of the building. We've all agreed that there's an alternate route to starting that work before we get the letter that we're looking for. So I think the importance of that meeting is to get together with the right people and for all of us to be talking together and agreeing that this is a project that we all are, it's important to all of us. They're a partner of CalSTRS when we're trying to build this building. And so I think the agreement that we made is as we move forward, if any of these issues escalate where there's a problem in the field that's gonna cause a long delay, we're gonna get in a room together, and we're gonna solve the problems together and find an alternate resolution. So I'm very pleased, just in the last half an hour, that we were able to do that, because Cassandra was an amazing partner in that. But we could expect further delays in inspections. And so as we're building a not-to-exceed budget, we want to make sure that we put enough, we build that risk into our budget numbers, because when we come back to you for a final budget, we want it to be only one time. With that said, we are currently projecting a cost increase of $15 million to $21 million on the project above the $300 million. We are engaging as an organization in an exercise to see if we can't bring that budget down. We're looking at all of the things that we still have control over. Obviously, the construction of the project is about 50% complete, and we can't at this point decide to take out an atrium or change our lobby because of the way that things are already moving along and constructed. But we are looking at the things that we still have control over. So those things like might-be finishes or our owner items, such as furniture or AV. So we're doing an exercise right now, and we're looking at all of those things that we have control over to see what kinds of things can we reduce to bring this project budget down. And then finally, on a really positive note, we were asked by several board members to research the opportunity to use bond financing for the expected increase in budget. And based on an initial research, issuing additional bonds to cover the added construction expenses is looking super positive, both from a process and a financial perspective. So in January, we're gonna come back to you with three different things. First, we're gonna talk to you about the cost savings exercises that we've been undertaking and what that looked like and what that gained us. We're gonna confirm our financing options and how they can positively impact the cost increases. We'll include an appropriate level of contingency in that budget to address remaining risks left in construction, and we'll ask the board to approve a new not-to-exceed budget to complete the project. So that is my update for you. I'm open to any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Miller?
Thank you. And amazing work, Ms. Blatnick, to you and Ms. Litchcock on really making sure that we can work together collaboratively. I think that's always phenomenal, and I'm so excited to hear that. In terms of, I think we're looking kind of at two major obstacles from the fire marshal at this time. One is the permit that you spoke about in the write-up here on whether or not we have the fire alarm permit, and the second is the curtain wall, right? Are those kind of the two? So where are we on those two issues, and will construction continue while we're waiting for the verification and the certification?
So all the permits have been issued. So at this point, we've received all the permits from the Office of the State Fire Marshal that we need. So that's really good news. This curtain wall issue is exactly the issue we were talking about with the fire marshal just in the last half an hour. And so that issue is, we're working through an alternative to where we can actually start hanging curtain wall in areas where this certain condition doesn't lie, waiting for that letter that we're looking for to ensure that we have these certain conditions. The fireproofing is covered with that. So that curtain wall issue, we are still continuing to work on other parts of the construction. So it's a critical path, but there's other things going on. So I don't want the board to think that while we're waiting, there's nothing going on on the project. There definitely is.
Right. Gil, could I just add, please, just a little bit more information on the state fire marshal and the participation? They have an onsite inspector here. So while the permits have been issued, they're looking at every single thing that's occurring to ensure that it meets the requirements that they need to have it be constructed in a safe manner and fire-protected. And so while those permits have been issued, there might be some variances from what the design is. And so that's where those issues come up that we need to work through to make sure that the work continues after the permitting.
Great, thank you. And then just in terms of your comments on the budget were really helpful in terms of timing and then how we, I know you're gonna talk about the leasing options, but just timing and then how we have a cadence of that with leasing the building? Can you talk a little bit about that and how you think you can truncate at least the ability to lease the space while the building is being completed?
Yes, definitely. So the timing, the timing of the leasing is we're working with JLL, who you'll be seeing in a few minutes. And basically, there is opportunities for us to actually lease the building while we're still in the building. So we're gonna be creative in the ways that we can be. We know that leasing our existing tower is super important. It was super important in the financial analysis that was done when the board approved the expansion, a project itself. So we're gonna be working with JLL, who's in the audience, you'll be seeing them up next. But we'll be working with them to see opportunities. If we do have opportunities for people who want to lease our building prior to the construction completion, what will that take internally for us to be able to do that? Can we change people's schedules in a way where we can actually vacate a floor and work really creatively to be able to start tenant improvements for somebody that's interested in our space prior to the time we actually move in? And as far as the timing of a budget goes, the expectation is we'll be coming back to you in January with the not-to-exceed number. We really feel like between now and then, all of the variables that we still have left in figuring out what a good budget is moving forward will all be completed. So that's the expectation, is to come back to you in January with that.
Great, thank you very much. And finally, just again, really appreciate your willingness to work on bond financing and work towards making sure that especially during these favorable times that we're really taking advantage of the environment and also serving our members well. So appreciate all the work you've done to put all that together. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Just the next item on the agenda is the headquarters occupancy plan and tower leasing update, which we have 30 minutes for. So I don't want Cassandra's CEO report to leak into this item. So there are two members of the committee that have questions. Please keep that in mind, Ms. Packlin and then Ms. Yamamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just quickly, thank you for the update, Lisa. And when you come back with the budget in January, will you also be coming with a pro forma to look at the bond financing option? And I think it would be helpful to see where we were two years ago and make sure that going forward, the leasing payments would be able to cover the debt service?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That'll be part of it.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions kind of come back, I'm still kind of confused about the budget increase, because you talked about the soft costs and the hard costs, and I kind of know. But where, you said that we could cut in the soft costs, but how does that? To me, I was understanding the construction is where the budget needs to be increased and not necessarily the soft costs. But is it in total?
Yeah, so I think the confusion is the hard cost is the cost of the construction itself.
Right.
And then when you have soft costs, you have soft costs that cover all of the services that we're paying to the partners that we have going on as well. Actually, in the hard cost, there's the DPR contract, which is our contractor that's working on the construction. So those costs, the reason why there's soft cost and hard cost increases is because as the project was delayed, we have to keep those people on the project that much longer. So for instance, we've got our contractor DPR, we've got Ridge Capital. Those are all people that we need to oversee the project until its completion. And because the project's been delayed, their fees go up by that amount of time. So if the schedule goes over by five months, we have to keep them on contract on the site five months longer. Does that answer your question?
Do they even be considered soft costs?
Well, soft costs would be like for our architect. If our architect had to stay longer, those are kind of what's included in soft costs.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yamamoto. Mr. Rafino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I know we've been talking about bond financing, and I'm sure you've been working with the treasurer's office, being that she is the agent, the sales, and issues. And please feel free to reach out, and she will be pleased to do anything that she can to help and facilitate the process. Just want to put it out there publicly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rafino. Seeing no other questions, turn it back to Cassandra.
The only, the last thing I just wanted to mention is that the governor did make an appointment to the school board seat. So you will have another member sitting with you the next time that we meet. Ken Tang of Alhambra is gonna be sitting in that position. So I'll be sending out some additional information, but I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that appointment. That was it.
Thank you, Cassandra, and congratulations to Mr. Tang. Look forward to working with him. Next item on the agenda is item eight, which is the headquarters occupancy plans and tower leasing update.
We have some guests.
I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, and will you introduce our guests, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Walking up is Alexis Garrett and Greg Levi, and they are our marketing organization that's helping us lease our current tower, as that was a big part of the financial analysis that we did for you when you made the decision to build. So this is kind of a two-part item. I'm just gonna start by talking a little bit about our occupancy plans. There was a question, I believe it was by Ms. Higa, about how we are planning to occupy our building, you know, now that we've gone through this pandemic and a lot of people are thinking really carefully about how they bring people back into the organization. And so I just wanted to share with all of you that we have made a decision to bring CalSTRS staff back in a blended work environment, which basically means that we're allowing people to come back two to three days a week in the building to do things that we know we can do better together, like innovate, collaborate, and have those one-on-one meetings with their manager and such, and then allowing that flexibility for them to continue working from home a couple days a week because they've proven that they can do it. It's been an amazing exercise that we've gone through the last 18 months, and staff have been able to stay very productive. So we want to allow that flexibility as we move forward. So what that means is that facilities is now working with each branch and going over what their business needs are, because we have to do a little bit of reconfiguration in the building to make sure we can accommodate everyone and based on their schedules. So we might have people that are working two days a week. And what that means is if you're working two days a week, you're gonna have what we call a hotel station, which means it's gonna be an unassigned seat. So when you come in the office, you'll use a software tool, and you'll actually book a seat for that day, and we'll have a seat available for you. Anybody working three days or more will have a permanent desk. So what that means to our plans that we had had pre-pandemic when we were thinking about the headquarters expansion is nothing's really gonna change. What it may mean is that we're gonna be able to allow more divisions, smaller divisions, to move into the headquarters expansion that we didn't think we would have room for. But since we're gonna have this hoteling section of people, we're gonna be rotating people in and out. Let's just give an example. You could have 14 people sharing seven workstations because of the way their schedules work. So that's gonna allow us to have a little bit of extra space that we're gonna be able to use that way. And also, we're not sure about our investment office and what their growth rate's gonna be. We know they're gonna grow over the next three to four years, but if they grow quicker than we anticipate, we'll also have additional space in our existing tower to provide to them for that purpose. So that's really all I have on the occupancy plans before I hand it over to JLL. Does anybody have any questions?
I think we do have some questions, and let me turn it over to Ms. Erdin.
I can hold it.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we hear from Mr. Levi and Ms. Garrett, and then we'll open up to questions. I'm sure there are some curious minds up here in terms of what the future of work here at CalSTRS will look like. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Levi and Ms. Garrett.
Great. And we actually are gonna address a little bit about what we think the future of office space will look like, you know, in the private sector throughout Sacramento and the United States here in our presentation. First of all, I just wanted to say that the building you built over 10 years ago was a very forward-thinking building. You incorporated, you know, partially because of the way your culture is, but the things you incorporated are what a lot of the private sector buildings are now trying to aspire to get to. You know, your collaboration type of spaces, your sustainability, the health and safety of their workers, all that has been, is now very, very, very concerning, and everybody's kind of playing catch-up. But you built a building like this over 10 years ago, and it's actually perfectly positioned. So I think, you know, that's worth noting. When we started this project, the world looked a lot different, obviously. In the, for example, in the fall of 2019, vacancy in our office space of downtown Sacramento. And by the way, Alexis and I have been doing downtown Sacramento office leasing for the last 30, 35 years. We were around 12% vacant overall Sacramento, and downtown was around 7% vacant. And we moved in the first quarter of 2020 to 5% vacant. So the market was really, really strong. The current, the trend back then was really a flight to quality. Tenants were looking to build out spaces that they could recruit new talent. That was really the big focus back then, was to find new talent that was going to sustain the workforce over the next, you know, generation, couple decades. All of our office product, we haven't had any new construction of new buildings in Sacramento for over 10 years, and our office supply has had been aging. The state of California was very active. They had 3 million square feet either under construction or planned at that time, and they've built throughout the entire pandemic. But at the time, they were completely oversubscribed and looking for additional space in private sector buildings as well. When COVID hit in March of 2020, there was pretty much abrupt stop to the office market. People adopted a work-from-home environment, and the pandemic actually impacted where people wanted to live. And Sacramento was this recipient of over 12,000, primarily Bay Area jobs, or Bay Area relocations. They moved to Sacramento. We didn't necessarily have a lot of companies move to Sacramento, but they just decided to come to Sacramento for a better quality of life and to work from home. You know, I think this created a lot of the flexibility, and, you know, we're hoping that this will eventually turn into some sort of hub-and-spoke model in which they do actually relocate some of their business operations to Sacramento. Now, where we are today, in our current situation, is companies are continuing to look at their reoccupation of their spaces, just like CalSTRS is. And they're evaluating what their future office space needs are gonna be. Rental rates have surprisingly been unchanged. We have seen some concessions increase as the forms of free rent, tenant improvements, and some moving allowances. But those are still, you know, questionable about how long they'll main, how long they'll be escalated. We do anticipate in our downtown, the state of California will have some significant move-outs as they've completed spaces and reoccupied their space, which will have some impact on us, but not as significant as you might be concerned about. And the flight, the flight to quality, the term that I used earlier, is continued to be, it's actually intensified. People, companies want to find buildings that they can offer their employees a very safe, healthy workplace, and a lot of times reconfigured office space that will allow them more social distancing, yet allow them to still be very productive. So I think our first law we're gonna talk about, and this is not one that we really gonna go to too much detail, but essentially, this is kind of a pre-COVID and a post-COVID look at space. And essentially, all it is, is it illustrates that what we had is the trend was that tenants during COVID, before COVID, they were relocating. Post-COVID, they were tend to renewing, shorter-term renewals, less commitment to capital, capital cost, and really because they were unsure about their traditional office uses and what they were gonna look like. And uh and really because they were unsure about their traditional office uses and what they were going to look like in the future. Um so I guess the lead into the next part is our marketing strategy had to had to change during COVID. Um. Uh we had our our office occupiers and site selectors were unwilling or unable to tour buildings. So we had to adjust our marketing efforts to a more virtual um friendly uh environment. And Alexis is going to uh go into some of these items.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for having us uh this morning. Um yes, so in two thousand twenty, we had to pivot our marketing materials. And we went virtual. Um we fully embraced all the latest technologies um so that people could really experience the building. From wherever they were. Um if we did include links for our marketing materials in your board um agenda, so. Please take a look at that if you haven't already. Um. We created virtual tours of all of the buildings, so all of the vacant spaces. The uh amenity space such as the lobby, the committee room, the very boardroom we're sitting in here today. Um uh fitness center, all all the amenities, so uh our tenants and prospects could really get a feel for. Um each individual space and and self-paced as as they um so wished. Uh we also hired a videographer and um they used drone technology to. Capture the views of uh from the building, the landscape, and um they used a. A production-like camera to give the effect of how it would feel to enter the building if you were to walk through the. The front door and experience the lobby for the first time. Uh we also wrote a uh descriptive narrative to go along with that video that really tells the story of waterfront place. Um and what it feels like to to be here on the campus. Uh we developed a custom website. Um it's all interactive, very user-friendly, covers all the details of the building, um so. Uh tenants can take their time to explore um each and every aspect of the building. Um. We created a um a new email campaign that was designed to um emphasize all of the things that tenants want. In today's market and that this building has to offer, so. Um sustainability is really top of mind for for companies, so the building excels in in those areas with its LEED certification. Um it's also, the building's also been well-held, safety-rated, which is the new. Seal of approval for healthy buildings, so you know when you walk into a building, it's a a safe place to be. Um indoor air and water quality, that's a big thing as well. Um so, you know, air and air and water is tested regularly and monitored. Um even the CO2 levels of the air we're breathing right now, so we know it's. Free and and clear of any contaminants. Um all the enhanced cleaning protocols, um wellness is of course top of mind for all companies right now, so. Highlighting all the great features of the building that um uh as far as the uh the fitness center and um. The um uh outdoor access to the Riverwalk. Um and of course, the cafe with organic produce, healthy meals throughout the day. And then a big one also is access to the childcare facility that will be available in. Um the new expansion tower. Um over the last year, the experience that a lot of parents have had. Um with their children, um there's some hesitancy of getting back to work and being away from their children, so. Um offering a solution here on site um is a really great aspect that we can offer uh the future tenants. Um so we've made all these enhancements um to the marketing to address the very real concerns of tenants today. But the essential role of the office has not changed.
Yep, um so this this slide is just, uh you know, I think we were first looking about uh what what is the essential role and and how did it change? And that was our conclusion is. It really hasn't. The um you know, the office space is it's important to. To uh project an image, this is private sector, and showcase its products and it's it's, you know, its employees. The um it's a it's designed to be an a place where people can be innovative and collaborate. It's a designed to attract the young employees and also to create an environment that people feel comfortable and um and are are happy to be at. Um it's also designed to uh protect the intellectual capital of 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 any given organization. Um culture, socialization, those are very important parts and and facilitate team building. And ultimately, productivity um at the office tends to be a higher than than work-from-home environment. Um this, you know, I think so I think what we're trying to say is it's, I think a lot of people are are looking at. The factors of of well, you know, is it is an increase or people are working from home, does that mean a decrease in office space? And it's 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 not that simple, and that's what this slide is really trying to demonstrate. Is that there's so many different aspects of of what the office, future of office space is going to look like, and the the result is, we don't know yet. But but we definitely know there will be demand. And it's going to look different than it looked two years ago, but there will be demand.
Um yeah, so as Greg explained, the uh the factors impacting demand are vast, um and there's really no one size, it's all for an organization. Um what we do know is that space configurations are likely to change and um. The the um historically, office spaces had focused more on individual workspaces. Uh with some collabora- collaboration spaces, but a lot of individual desks. Um we know the office of the future will likely have a lot more collaboration space and a a lot less. Of the individual workspaces is just to accommodate the flexibility of um hybrid work models. Um and as Greg mentioned, um your building was designed in a very progressive future-thinking way. Um so with, you know, all the collaboration spaces you do have here, wide-open floor plans, um excellent natural light. And um minimal private offices, so we feel like we're very well-positioned from a design standpoint. As future tenants start looking at spaces um to plan their their office. And then this next slide, we'll just cover quickly. Um. We included it because it's a snapshot of um in uh the adoption of hybrid work by industry type. Um I won't go into all of it here, but um on the left, it's the average percent of uh employees in hybrid work-from-home models. And across the bottom, the average projected work-from-home days. The all-industry average is thirty-nine percent of of employees that will be working from home. Or in some some fashion, um with a two-point-three-six days um average work from home. Um so, well, yes, uh in there is an increase in work-from-home. Most companies are are not going full remote. Um they are adopting a work-from-work model. Um but still allowing some flexibility for that better work-life balance. Um so we'll take a quick look at reentry timelines. When people are coming back and adopting these um these work-from-home models. Um go. So we were on track um prior to the Delta variant um for sixty to seventy percent occupancy. By the end of the year, this is a national average uh for office occupants. Um we've seen a setback in that momentum um to where we're anticipating will be at about fifty percent um at the end of this year. Um but most companies, and we we survey them on a monthly basis nationally, um. They are planning to have most of their reentry begin in the first part of next year, so companies like Calsters who have already started a phased-in approach. Um will do more a fully um integrated reentry plan beginning in early next year. Um so at which time, we're really anticipating that demand's going to increase across the markets.
Um. This is a uh copy of what we do. It's a it's a skyline we do on a quarterly basis that highlights the the um. Uh Class A office buildings in our downtown Sacramento. Um and I think the I'll go into it in a second, but the reason why I we felt like you, we were probably asked to come here today and and Lisa talked about this a lot with us. Was that, you know, we we made assumptions before COVID and are those assumptions still valid? Um what's the market look like in today? And, you know, is there still going to be a market for office space? Can we still lease the building in a timeline that we that we projected? Um at lease rates that we projected? And um are these all assumptions still valid? And the answer is yes, they are. Um absorption has been neutralized by COVID, net absorption, but gross absorption is continuing. And what I mean by that is we're not gaining office space, but tenants are relocating into higher-quality new office spaces. And we are going to see, um we've already seen the the activity we have are been have been from not necessarily from outside users that are growing into our market. But it is from existing users who may be rightsizing a little bit, not not a whole bunch, they're rightsizing. And they're reconfiguring their space and they need to move into a new, higher-quality space to do that. Um. This uh as I mentioned, this the skyline, uh it your building is the furthest one on on the left. And it shows the blue, which is the future available office space. Um the blue, as you as you look across there, there's one of the building with a lot of blue. That's the Renaissance Tower at Eight One K Street, and that's a result of a lot of the state tenants moving into. Um the Natural Resources Building when that when that when they when they choose to do so, and that'll happen fairly soon. Uh the red is is simply vacancy in the market. And um the yellow is the sublease, which is a fairly um insignificant part of our space as opposed to a lot of other Bay Area markets that had saw a significant amount of sublease space available. Um the result of all this is we're still at ninety percent occupancy. And in our downtown. And a lot of our tenants, um they stayed in place and they're not in default, and we don't have a lot of default rates, and they're still paying rent. Um they're they're working in a hybrid model and are planning to come back to work sometime in the next six months. So I think that 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 part looks good. The um we've seen no real decline. Our our average asking rates are three dollars and forty-two cents across the board here. We've seen no real decline in rates. We have seen increasing concessions and TIs. Um and um. Um so that uh you know, in the state of California is continuing to be active, even though they are building their own buildings. So we're expecting a fairly significant shift as tenants come back towards the first quarter of next year. Um we think that the hybrid uh environment will be around for the near future and we'll have to determine how permanent it's going to be, you know, we'll we'll see. Demand looks pretty good. Um and um our competition, that's the proper reason to put this up there, is this competition is not overwhelming. Uh we are a best-in-class building. Um and uh it's really one of those buildings that for private sectors never really had an opportunity to come out and look at. Um you know, we have a lot to offer on the West Sacramento side of the river, you know, and um. And uh uh it's very well-received and we hit a snag during is just as we're getting ready to go with COVID. But now we're starting to get more tours and people interested in the building, and I think it looks very good.
Greg and Alexis, I think you, that's the end of your presentation?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I would summarize that as relatively bullish from your perspective.
Yes.
Um but I'd love to hear some questions from my colleagues in terms of uh the assumptions and how you're thinking about it. So Ms. Urden?
Thank you. Um great presentation and really helpful. I'm interested to know if your level of confidence around that outcome, which is a very bullish view and. Um has changed at all, and I referenced some of the data that was shared of that shift. Um of the increased percentage renewals, obviously in an extraordinary time. The shift to rotation to the Class B buildings as a percentage of the deals done. And then this sort of increase in concessions and TIs, and that's what jumped out to me together with the. Um shift that sounds like is underway with some of the state buildings and state occupation.
Yeah, the the statistics are probably not going to look great, but you're just as you mentioned, the Class B, those tenants are moving out of Class B into Class A buildings. I mean, it's it it, you know, statistically, we're not going to like be knocking it out of the park in the Sacramento area, but this building is very well-positioned to receive those tenants. Um the um I think the um the 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 flight, it's really the flight to quality is what is what we're going to do.
And that persists with the same confidence that you've seen. It certainly resonates with what you I've seen in. Other markets, but you feel highly confident still about that here.
Yeah, and then, you know, as you mentioned, the concessions, I mean, that's that's still, it's that's still a factor, but our lease rates, our base rates have not changed a whole bunch.
Thank you. And my earlier question, it was a great presentation, Lisa, thank you, and just if you can keep us posted, because I know we've talked about, and then the JLL representatives referred to. Um the mix of um, you know, increased space perhaps for densification collaborative spaces, but less, you know, some of the hot dusting going on in them. As that continues to solidify, if you can just keep us posted as our space needs change for our own um employees too. As I know you well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Urden. Ms. Miller?
Well, thank you. The race to quality we talked about, obviously, the new Natural Resources Building is state-of-the-art, so you know. Probably more like our new building than this one. What have you, what analysis have you done for the shift of the state as it moves all of its buildings around? Obviously, there's a huge amount of construction in this space. More in obviously the Sacramento side, so what what is your analysis there? I didn't see that.
Uh about what the state's impact on on the private sector? Well, it's really.
And the state's impact on this building specifically?
On this building. Well, you know, the private sector, the the state is when they started construction and when we were looking at this before COVID. They were oversubscribed in the Natural Resources Building and the Richards Boulevard project, and then they obviously had the the health services and the. And the the building, the annex, Capitol Annex Building that they were building. Um since then, it looks like they're not, they're not, they don't seem to be looking for a lot of new office space. Um um per se, um of that, but the um. You know, you we never know during the state. I mean, it's, you know, things things change quite a bit. Um so we, the answer is, we don't know with the state yet. Um in our conversations with them, as it sits right now, there's no real new activity. They're not looking for any significant amount of office space in in our market.
Mm-hmm, and have you talked to them about whether or not they're using some of their offices for private spaces?
Sorry, what?
Whether or not they're using their offices for private space as well?
For private space?
Is the Natural Resources Building, are they going to include some? Private tenants in that space?
No, they're not going to have any private tenants.
Do we know that for sure?
Yes, hundred percent, yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe you know something I don't.
I'm holding you to it. Well, you just said a hundred percent, so I'm holding you to that.
Ninety-nine percent. Um I I I've never seen the state go outside of of their thing. I would uh. Yeah, I can't imagine that ever happening in my thirty-five years. I've never seen that happen, so.
Right. Yeah, just the pandemic.
Yeah.
Um thank you, and then I do think it would be helpful to just sort of get updates on how many folks you're bringing through. I think just understanding the the cadence with which you're bringing people in. And how much space they're looking at, because obviously that then the the certainty that you bring to this feeds into the budget. Of the new construction, so so obviously you you're aware of the domino effect, you're not in charge of the new building at all, but it does, it does all work together for a final budget.
Yeah, the um, well, most of the tenants uh for the past year have been, when we tried to tour, we have to run them through a virtual tour. Um and it's not so much, it's not because. Your organization wouldn't let us do it, it's because they didn't want to to tour.
Right.
Um we had one tour and made a proposal just recently. I think we're we're a little limited, not not limited, but we're we're strategically trying to find the right-sized tenants. Um it doesn't make sense to start with a, say, a half-floor tenant necessarily. Um but we did make a proposal for a full-floor of a full-floor tenant that we've occupied one entire floor just recently. Um that was our first significant tour and it was very well-received. Um. Um anticipate probably a few more tours over the next couple of months and uh we'll probably get proposals from them. But I think it's really going to accelerate sometime during the next year.
Like between now and next October?
Yes, that's what we're gonna, that's, you know, it's going to take us. Um you know, I mean, we're still at, you know, for example, our building, we're we're just across the river. Our building is still at twenty percent occupied as across the board. We're a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. Um you know, the tenants, we they still aren't downtown yet. And uh they're still evaluating what their space are going to needs are going to be. They're still kind of, you know, it as opposed to a year from a year ago, they were, they're now. Looking at a future space, what the what is actually going to look like. But they're they're still kicking the can down the road a little bit. But I think we'll see an increase in activity and then, I mean, increase in tours, and then the activity will follow, you know, months afterwards.
Thank you.
Ms. Pika?
Thank you. Um thank you, Greg and Alexis, for the presentation. Um this may be more of a question, Lisa, for you or Cassandra. Um. Uh you know, you you have in your write-up a note that um. The financial analysis we developed for our long-term facility strategy included revenue based on leasing assumptions. Um it may be too early to know whether those need to be revised and the, you know, presentation that we just heard, as as others have pointed out, was very bullish, but I think um. I don't know if you have any thoughts on. Or anything you can share on how you would, um how you'd look at that and maybe um continue to keep us updated if you do think that there are revisions that need to be made at some point in the future.
Yes, certainly. I think that once this activity starts, like like Greg and and Alexis just shared, we're just starting to see people at the reentry start starting to happen, so I think that as we start to. Respond to some of these RFPs and we know what kind of tenants are out there and what they're looking for and making sure that we can. We can assume those same uh assumptions that we made when we uh presented in two thousand eighteen. And if there's variation or deviation from that, definitely come forward with the board. I can do a a regular, you know, update when we're talking about the headquarters expansion even to talk about the leasing. Of this particular building. It could be maybe a companion item that I do as we move forward to make sure we keep you apprised of what's going on.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll leave it to you to think about what you think is the right pace of reporting, but I think we just don't want to lose sight of that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Um. Don't see any other colleagues. I have two questions. I'm curious about. Um. The direct average at um per square foot is three dollars and forty-two cents here, right, in uh Sacramento, West Sacramento? What is it on Sand Hill Road?
Sand Hill?
Sand Hill Road, yeah, in Silicon Valley.
I'm, I don't know off the top of my head. I guess it's, I guess it's double to triple.
Double to triple, okay. Um and certainly the flight to quality seems to be a trend. Manhattan. It's it, it's the trend, right? There's also discussion about repurpose. There's also discussion about repurposing buildings. For example, the move towards logistics and the last mile and the move towards everything going digital. How do how do you view that as an option for, you know, Class A buildings that have in the last ten years served a certain purpose, but in ten years from now might serve a very different purpose where a potential tenant could come in and take the entire building for future use of potentially logistics purposes?
Yeah, that's that's interesting. It's it's, we're still trying to get our hand, arms around the whole logistics and last mile process because I think that we tended, we tend to think of like, for example, the Sacramento B site, you know, my first thought, everybody's first thought was, oh, that's going to be, that's going to be housing. And then they went to the to the logistics thing and wait, wait a minute, we can, we can afford the logistics and the logistics and last mile guys can afford to pay so much money because it's so, so such a profitable business. They can, they can outbid that. And that's what we're seeing in some of these urban cities and not so much in Sacramento, but we are seeing it in other urban centers. You're able to outbid office sites for, because they're, because it's such a profitable and a business. I don't know if, I think it will compete with office sites. I don't know if it's going to compete with office buildings. I'm not sure how well, how well we'll be able to adapt a Class A office building, maybe the Class B type properties.
Yeah, just just curious.
Yeah, it's 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 something that that we'll have to look at. You know, it's interesting. I hadn't thought about an office building being being advertised.
Yeah. Well, thanks. I think we have one more question from a board member, Ms. Yamamoto, and then we'll we'll adjourn for lunch after your question.
Very, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nice presentation. I was just kind of thinking, we had talked about the delay of our QE, HQE. So and that's, that's going to be several months out. Then if, how does that figure? How does that conflict with our leasing options for this current building? And has that been taken under consideration?
Yeah, I don't think that that, I mean, it's the the world kind of stopped during COVID anyway, so it's, we, I mean, it doesn't really matter to us. We've, we haven't, we wouldn't have had tenants because of COVID to line up with that anyway. So the the delay, I mean, it's, I don't want to say it was welcome, but I mean, it's not, it's it's not going to affect, we're not losing anybody because of the delay.
Okay.
Yeah, and most tenants that are this this target size for the the floor plates that we have, which are twenty-eight thousand square feet, most of the tenants are looking, you know, with well in advance. So the timing actually lines up very well with when the project will be completed and when we could deliver a floor. And as we mentioned, the ability to potentially deliver a floor earlier prior to the completion of the the expansion tower. We are, you know, looking at those possibilities for those single-floor users, but for a multi-tenant, a multi-floor user, it's probably going to line up really well with the completion of the the office expansion.
Just just to keep an eye on it, that's all I was wondering.
A lot of those tenants that were expiring, a lot of times they would, they would go and do like a one-year renewal because they were unsure at that time. So now they're lining back up again with us where we are. So we're we're tracking those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Yamamoto. Greg, Alexis, thanks for being with us today in person. We look forward to the staff keeping a surprise to the progress of the leasing, et cetera. And this is a very important item for all of us. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll break for lunch until one fifteen. Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Jonathan. Good afternoon, everyone. We are back in session with with item nine on our agenda, which is the Pension Solution Project Update. We have thirty minutes allocated for this item. And we have several presenters who all will take a couple of minutes this afternoon before we get into Q and A. And I'm going to start with Graham Finley with your comments first. Graham?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Graham Finley with Grant Thornton, and I'm going to provide a brief IPAC perspective on the Pension Solution Project to start our informational item today. As you're aware, the project is currently defining a new path to completion, given the delays that the project has experienced. The current focus is on agreeing on an achievable schedule that would combine the FR two and FR three releases into a single implementation. Lisa is going to provide an update on the status of those discussions with CGI in a moment. I'd like to focus my comments on providing a perspective on what we can expect from the scheduled discussion and what we'll need to keep track of once the agreement on the schedule has been achieved. You'll likely hear the word viable used a lot in the context of the scheduled discussions with the objective being a viable schedule for the remaining project tasks. From our perspective, what viable means is that the schedule is technically sound. It contains all the tasks necessary to complete the work. Those tasks are ordered correctly and any dependencies between those tasks have been built in. It also means that the resources from both CalSTRS and Team CGI who will be executing the tests have been identified. And those resources have not been overloaded with more work than they could reasonably take on. What's important to understand is that just because a schedule is considered viable, it doesn't guarantee that the project will actually achieve the planned dates. Even the most detailed schedules rely on a number of assumptions. And if those assumptions don't bear out, then the project won't proceed according to the plan. And we've already seen this on the Pension Solution Project with several previous assumptions relating to testing efforts proving to be incorrect. For this schedule, we believe there are three categories of assumptions that are going to be critical. The first is the actual number and quality of resources deployed to the project. This will need to match the assumptions that the schedule is built upon. The second is the productivity of those resources. This shows up both in the assumptions of how quickly CalSTRS can execute testing as well as how fast Team CGI can burn down the backlog of problem incident reports found by testing. And then the third category is the number of PIRs that will be found during the remainder, remainder of the testing activities, which obviously drives the total amount of work. The project has made a series of assumptions in these areas as they're developing the new schedule. The assumptions are well-notivated in the sense that they're based on recent prior experience, but they're still assumptions. We believe that keeping a close eye on these assumptions will be an important part of generating confidence in the ability of the project to stay on track and to meet the new implementation dates. So for this reason, we plan to use these assumptions as a main part of our oversight reporting going forward. And we're hopeful that by focusing on what we think will be leading indicators, we'll be able to provide timely insight into the risks that the project may face in meeting the new implementation date as well as the root causes of those risks. The other point I'd like to make is related to a change in our reporting cadence. From now on, after each board meeting, we'll be providing a summary to the board of the main pension solution topics and risks discussed during the board meeting as well as a summary of any questions asked by the board that couldn't be fully answered during the meeting. This will provide the board an opportunity to clarify or if they want to add additional questions for us to respond to before the next board meeting. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lisa to provide an update on the scheduled discussions.
Thanks, Graham. So as you're aware, Julie and I are serving in the joint role of COO in the governance structure to assist the project along. Our top priority is to work closely with our project team and CGI to achieve a viable schedule that addresses quality measures and associated cost and budget impacts. We've been meeting in person with CGI leadership, Brian Lane, the VP of Strategic Operations, and with us today, Virginia Williams, the VP of the Northwest. The meetings have all already resulted in agreement on some basic issues, including accountability from CGI for certain contractor acceptance testing delays that a revised schedule will include quality measures that may or may not add to the increase in completion costs, but will address staff quality concerns such as potentially adding a soft-launch implementation. That process improvements are needed on both sides to improve communication, create a more collaborative working environment, and early identify potential project challenges to achieve a successful outcome. And we will be working with our teams to determine what changes would be most effective. We've agreed that we need key metrics such as defect resolution, rates for CGI, and UAT execution rates for CalSTRS as well as joint reporting metrics that management and the board can monitor during the duration of the project so that any early warning signs can be immediately addressed and performance meeting expectations can be evaluated. We've asked that both CalSTRS and CGI teams meet daily with a goal to achieve a viable schedule, which will also be shared with our oversight vendors for their input. Some of the challenges that we'll be working through with CGI include what are the right quality measures and activities to put in place to ensure confidence while promoting cost efficiencies? How are we going to resolve scope disputes timely? How are we going to manage future changes that may be needed for existing or new functionality as well as regulatory changes to prevent change saturation while still ensuring that we meet CalSTRS business requirements and ensuring the right resources are in play, are in place on both sides to enable a successful outcome? So next week, we're going to commence those daily meetings that we've been having with CGI to address these issues and are hopeful to reach an agreement before the next board meeting. We'll keep the board's subcommittee updated of our progress along the way. And we'll also provide an update to the board at the January meeting. So with that said, I would like to turn it over to Virginia, if that's okay, for her comments.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon. On behalf of Brian Lane, CGI's VP for Strategic Operations, and myself, I would like to echo Lisa's sentiments and her statement. We are pleased to be working with both Julie and Lisa, and we have found a lot of progress in the last meetings. We spent many hours together working towards a new agreement on scope, schedule, and budget. CGI is confident in the quality of the system we have built to date, and we understand the importance of quality to the CalSTRS project. Lisa, Julie, Brian, and I, with input from our teams, are working together to find the right balance between quality, schedule, and budget. There is a focus from CGI on resources. We are rapidly onboarding staff for the project. Since the last time we met, we have onboarded forty-two of sixty identified staff members. They are going through the CGI onboarding process and will be entering the CalSTRS onboarding process. We have recently proposed a new project manager who is a top talent with proven results in delivering large and complex projects. And we're confident that this candidate has the experience as both a practitioner and a leader to get us over the finish line. Certainly, we realize that the CalSTRS project team must finish their vetting process. CGI is hopeful that if there are any concerns on any of the key staff that we propose, that we are able to provide further information to the CalSTRS staff so we can address those concerns. We look forward to resuming those daily discussions that Lisa mentioned next week and feel confident that we will shortly have a schedule and a budget that gets us to success. And we look forward to jointly presenting that with Lisa and Julie at the board meeting in January. And now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Prashant Nataal, for his comments.
Yep, thanks, Virginia. So today I would like to highlight two quick updates since our board write-up covers the detailed updates already. The first one is CalSTRS is working with CGI to discuss and examine assumptions for the revised schedule with a focus on quality and viability. And the second one I want to highlight is that while the revised schedule is being determined, both the teams continue to make progress across all the work stream. So just because we don't have a viable schedule yet, it doesn't mean the work has stopped. Work has continued to make progress across all of our stream. And in the end, I would say that, given this is a very complex and long project, I do want to recognize the project team for being persistent in working towards getting to a right solution despite the challenges we all are facing. So it's it's easy to give up, but none of us is willing to give up and we are, we are looking forward to get this to a right destination. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Prashant. Ms. Williams, thank you for being with us in person today. Very important for you to be here. Ms. Finley, thank you for your comments and very clear, straightforward in terms of communications, including questions that can be submitted to you after the meeting. And then one communication back to the board with your answers. That cadence, I think, will go a long way improving our oversight responsibilities. So let me go to Ms. Pakwin and any other questions the board members have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation today. And I appreciate the fact that CalSTRS, CGI, Grant Thornton has been working so diligently to try to address all of these issues and come to a conclusion. And I I think I heard that the budget, revised budget would be, and schedule would be brought back in January. Is that correct? Okay. And during that time, would you be able to present all of the metrics that were mentioned so that we can take a look at them as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. And one other question I have is when would the leadership positions that are currently vacant be expected to be filled?
I I think that we're in the vetting process with most of those, so I think it will be very shortly.
So by the end of the calendar year then?
Oh, absolutely. Wouldn't you agree?
Yep. That will be our goal, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Pakwin. Graham, I just want to make sure that I understood correctly in your comments. It's a little bit of follow-up to Ms. Pakwin's question in terms of the budget coming back to us and the goal in January. That you're communicating, you're stating that there are three assumptions that are built into this that are leading indicators as to whether or not the project is on a track. Your communications between meetings highlight those three assumptions and where we're at?
Yes, I mean, so there's, I would say, three categories of assumptions because there's multiple, you know, numbers behind those. But one of the things we'll be doing as the the revised schedule is agreed to by CalSTRS and CGI, both ourselves and the IVNV consultant, will be reviewing that both to, you know, make sure we understand what the assumptions are, provide our own assessment of the viability of those assumptions, you know, are they really realistic? And then that'll allow us to form a basis for communicating those and monitoring them over time. So that should all be part of the package, by January.
Thank you very much. Let me go to Ms. Ms. Miller and then Mr. Prashant.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for being here. And I'm thrilled that it sounds like we're making a little bit more progress, certainly from from where we were last time, and and that's fantastic, especially with the assignment of an executive to the account. Ms. Williams, so thank you very much for for responding to that and for bringing your vice president on board. I sincerely appreciate it. I have four questions, Mr. Chair.
Please.
First, to Mr. Michelle, just in terms of our legacy system, what what are the risks and how long do we really have on that legacy system before we're in a position where our members are are not able to access it in a in a timely way?
So. Shish, would you just identify yourself for?
So that question came out yesterday also in the, our compliance.
Yeah.
So we have a mainframe and we're working through challenges just like retaining the staff. We have some staff is in the retirement age. They can retire anytime, whenever they choose to. So what we did in the last four, five years, we compensate with the contracting help and reach out to the companies who can do remote work to help maneuver in this. So we are positive that there is no foundational or structural issues in the system and we can continue to pay. But it's just retaining the staff is a key challenge right now.
Okay. I think that that in addition to the reporting we're doing, going on pension solutions, understanding the legacy system, because obviously our our timeline also had to do with the age of the legacy system and making sure that our members could access it. So we could just make sure to understand that and the challenges, both technological and staffing.
Yeah, but but last, what we did in the last three, four years, we just keep up, keep up to date. So it's just in case where there are some limitation in there.
Of course.
And that's why we are pushing back for some changes. If it's happening in the business area and it can be delivered that one, we are evaluating that one, prioritizing that one. And if you just feel that we have to do it, then it's just providing like it will take nine months or eighteen months or whatever. But we are not just making actively changes into the accessing system.
Right, right. I I just think absolutely I understand that, but it'll be important to have that be part of the update because what we're going to see is we need to, that will be part of the budget writ large.
Right.
We have to update an existing system now, which was not the expectation, and work on a new system. So we have sort of two systems that do need to be maintained in order to serve.
Right. We are doing that.
Thank you. And then in terms of the the schedule, I I do want to note, like, that that was all of the answers we had on October eighteenth, I believe, indicated that there would be a schedule today. I don't want to belabor Ms. Pakwin's point about a schedule and a budget, but I I do want to, I think that the progress on the schedule will be a really important update, Mr. Finley, that that we receive not only today but ongoing. Obviously, without a schedule, we can't build a budget. And without those two things, we won't see completion of the project. So. And then just in terms of the competence measures staff has developed to analyze CGI's ability to complete the necessary tasks, what, what is that system? How, how are we evaluating the confidence that we have? I understand that I'm, again, really grateful for the collaboration. I'm really grateful for the resources from CGI, clearly. But I, I do think that we need some type of measurement of our confidence in the complete execution. What are those measures, Mr. Finley?
So, so I'm not sure to what extent Prashant has shared with some of the materials that he put together. So from a project team perspective, the things that the project team, CalSTRS project team would like to see. We had developed essentially the set of metrics that I was just talking about. There's about an eighty percent overlap between the, the things that we came up with, that Prashant's team put together. And a lot of it is those early indicators about around staffing is the number one, the, the earliest thing that we would see in terms of material changes in the staffing levels. Because all of the other things sort of follow from that in terms of the ability to be productive and delivering results and so on. So that's the first one. And then the next one is changes in the trajectory of the outstanding balance of defects, if you want to call them that, that have to be fixed. So there's a, there's a backlog of those and those have to be burnt down at a certain rate. We're expecting to see that curve start to change, probably not until January. But that's sort of, so between now and the end of the calendar year, staffing is probably the number one thing. And then after that, there are some of the other operational metrics on the project that we expect to see shift, partly because of those staffing changes.
Right, that makes sense. But I, I think my question is more, I, I understand the metrics you put in place and appreciate that and think it'll be really helpful. But it's a little bit of a qualitative analysis as well. So if we do that with specific measures in mind, so you have the metrics and then you need the qualitative measures. And together, that, I, that will give everyone kind of benchmarks and bogies. And as we get towards that bogey, you'll be able to execute the project.
So the one other thing I would add in terms of more of a qualitative measure, and because it's qualitative, it's hard to put a number against it, I say. But speed of decision-making is another piece. And to the extent that the CalSTRS and the team CGI teams are able to come to joint perspectives and decisions rapidly. And it doesn't become a situation where, you know, we're in the middle of trying to arbitrate potentially something like that.
Right.
That's a, you know, sort of more of a qualitative change in the way the project operates versus, you know, something you can measure on a schedule. But to us, it'll be very significant.
Well, I think that is, I, that's certainly an important, an important piece of how we get to a schedule is the speed of decision-making. So I, I think that is, I appreciate you mentioning that and think that will be really important to keep the board abreast of. And then my final question, Mr. Chair, is on to CalSTRS, please, is the, the concerns you wrote about related to the CAT testing? Is it, is that, are those concerns related to the continued delays? Or, and resolving testing issues alone? Or is there a broader scope and quality problem? Because, right, so one is interrelated to the delays and staffing we've talked about. And then there's, and that's one part of the testing that I think you're working to resolve. What you haven't spoken to is potentially the scope of the, the scope or quality of the work writ large. So that's to you, Mr. Mattel, or to Ms. Black.
Yeah, I can do a short. So, so, so you're right. I think there are two issues, two large issues. One is just from Cal, from CalSTRS perspective, we do, we do believe that there are quality concerns. And that quality concerns are translating into, again, from our perspective into the CAD delays, into delay in completing the CAD testing. That's one aspect of it. And it is certainly part of the conversation when we are determining the viability and the quality of schedules. So we are discussing that, that very issue with CGI counterpart to make sure that those gets taken care of as we plan the next viable studio. That how are we going to mitigate that, that quality concern that we have raised in a timely manner? So that's one. And the second issue that, that we are facing is more around the, the situation where I think there was a question in the past whether the, the quality in the CAD, is it good enough or is it impacting the, the outcome in the UAT? So from our perspective, we are still concerned with, with that situation. I mean, it's probably a variation of that, the first one, I would say. But we are also discussing that very topic as we are determining the next schedule, the CGI, to make sure that we account for that issue as well as we're determining how long it will take for the subsequent activity like UAT to finish. If that assumption is really the situation we have on the table right now. So both of them are very active topics on the table as we're determining the next schedule for sure.
Great, thank you. Ms. Williams, did you want to add anything to that?
I do want to add to that. I do think to answer your question on scope, there are a lot of new features coming that are being considered in the schedule that you will see in January. So there has been an increase in scope. And these, the quality concerns that my colleague Prashant has mentioned are something that we are working through. You know, clearly you're aware that we see this a little bit differently. But that's the point of these meetings that we've been having with Julie and Lisa to get to one, you know, set of metrics that we can all use as those that we monitor ourselves against going forward. So we're, we're resolving some of our differences in that area. But I do want you to know that this new schedule that is coming is actually going to have quite a few new features and functions for the users.
And the features and functions, so obviously you instituted a new system and then you always expect new features and functions because that's, that's the evolution and lifecycle of a system like this. You've done this in other states. This isn't the only pension solution system you've integrated. So when we say new, part of it is that it has changed from the initiation of the project. But you, we would have expected it in terms of the lifecycle of a system like this. So I, I guess that would be my final request, Mr. Chair, is that when we're being updated, Mr. Finley, that this idea of what's new and what's expanded, some of it is just that it's taken a long time and technology changes. I go back to the DocuSign piece of this. That, to me, isn't new. That's an evolution of a system. So just making sure that, I, I do want to just acknowledge that's another point of disagreement here, but I, I think that's an important one for the board to understand. And with that, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Higa?
Um, thank you. Thank you very much for the update. I just, I wondered if you could just confirm that we were, we have the right level of activity and communication with employers about the changes in schedule, what that means to them and how we're making sure that they're, you know, prepared and managing any impact this has to whatever they've been budgeting or preparing for from a resource standpoint.
That's a great question. Enjoy. I think that's the only silver lining in this project so far, the employer. Because we did the soft launch early on and we recognized that they had to change. Some employer has to change their system and is taking the time. And we have a good team communicating regularly with them what is coming and how they can use the system. So we provided a lot of trainings as well as a communication to them. And they are on board, most of them. So I think, I think that piece is going good.
And even with the, with some of the delays in our implementation and some of the, you know, changes, whether in scope or other issues that Gail may have raised, are those, those are being addressed appropriately with the employers as well?
Yeah. So we are continuously, I think for the last three years, we, based on the feedback we got, we made some incremental changes there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Higa. And no one else in the queue. I want to thank you for your presentations, Mr. Finley. We look forward to the communications between meetings. So fellow board members, if you have additional questions, please submit them to Graham and he will compile them and submit a, one communications to all of us. Prashant, I want to thank you and your team for your persistence and resilience through the pandemic and all of the issues with this very complicated project. We do appreciate it and stay strong. Ms. Williams, thank you for being with us here today. And staff, we look forward to the, the update in January, which clearly is going to be an important meeting around this project. So thanks very much. Our next item is item ten. Mr. Rick Reed and David Lammerow, Review of CalSTRS Funding Levels and Risks. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So this is the 2021 Review of Funding Levels and Risk. We presented this report in the past. So we're going to keep it short and we're going to give, you know, brief summaries. But if there are any questions that you have, be sure to contact either David or myself. And we'll be happy to go over any, any part of the report that, that you like, so. But due to the time constraints, we're going to, we're going to be brief. And we hope that we can get everything in. And with that, and afterwards, I'm going to have a couple of words. Just keep in mind one thing that we do deal with the long term with our, with our work. And we've been, we have seen a lot of inflation, a lot of other things happen over the last couple of years that may not actually last. So just keep those things in mind and I think we will, we'll be okay. So I'm going to hand it over to David to go over the report.
Thank you, Rick. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice seeing all of you in person, finally. So what I wanted to do mostly today, we have a lot of information in the report. And we thought mostly for the presentation, we'll focus on sort of what took place last year and how especially the investment return we had last year, the great positive return, how it's impacting our outlook. So if you remember the last few years, we've been focusing a lot on risk with respect to how many teachers we have in California in the defined benefit program, investment risk. What I have here on the screen, just to kind of show you what happened last year. You know, we sort of knew last year that we had started to see less teachers participating in the defined benefit program. When the year ended, we finally knew the number. We lost about nineteen thousand teachers who no longer are participating in the defined benefit program. We're down to about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. If this had been the only event last year that took place, it probably would have driven contribution rates up. But everything was overshadowed by the twenty-seven point two percent return we had last year. Great year. The main thing I want to highlight here, we pointed that out in the staff report. As a board, you have adopted what we call a three-year asset smoothing policy. Mostly what it is, is what we're going to do with this, as you can see on the chart, we assume seven percent in the funding of the system. We earn twenty-seven. We had an excess return of about twenty percent. And what we're going to do in the funding as we do our valuations is we're going to slowly release it a third at a time. So next year, when we present to you the valuation, we're only going to recognize about seven percent of this twenty percent excess return. So because of that, our funding levels will improve, but it will, they will improve slowly over time. So what I've put on the screen here is a chart showing you two lines. The bottom line, the orange one, is the expected, the projection of funded status that we showed to you in the valuation last year, that assume we would earn seven percent last year. We earned twenty-seven. And as you can see, it did tremendous things. So just two things I want you to highlight. We're now going to hit eighty percent funded about ten years ahead of the previous schedule. And we're now scheduled to hit full funding five years ahead of schedule, two thousand and forty-one. But remember, this assumes we're going to earn seven percent every year in the future. You saw what one year did to this projection. It's, it's great. It's a fabulous year and you can see here how it has changed drastically. But that's what we're looking at now. We're in a much better position than we were, remember, a year ago, everyone was worried about where we were heading. Much better position today. And just dollar-wise, if you're curious to see what it's expected to do to our unfunded actual obligation or unfunded liability, drastic change here, kind of the light pink here is what we presented to you last June with the twenty-seven percent return, how, you can see how it's almost been cut in half. And as you can see, it's expected to go away in two thousand and forty-one. Now, what I want to show you next, we've talked about for the last few years, how when it comes to the rules of the funding plan, the state is highly sensitive to investment experience. While the employers not being as sensitive tended to move in a counterintuitive fashion. When we had good return, the contribution rates generally would slightly go up. So we wanted to visually show you this by looking at how we break down the unfunded liability. So if you recall last year when we presented the evaluation, we said our unfunded liability was a hundred and six billion dollars. About seventy-four billion dollar was the share of the employers. That's represented by the first bar on the left. The employer is the dark red bar. The state was, had about thirty-one, thirty-two billion dollars was the share of the, was the share of the state. You can see that by the orange bar on the left-hand side. And we also had that unallocated portion we talked about in the past. It was about four hundred million last year. Now, two things I want to show you here, let's focus on the state. Highly impacted by investment performance. Now, in two thousand and twenty-three, the state's share of the unfunded liability is expected to be eliminated and turned into a surplus, which is why the orange goes to the bottom of the chart. And that is a surplus that will keep growing over time. And again, this assumes that we earn seven percent every year in the future. But if that's the case, this is what our future will be. The unallocated also will become a surplus, as you can see the gray at the bottom. The employer, as we had mentioned in the past, is impacted in a counterintuitive way. You can see their share as we, is expected to increase over the next few years from seventy-four billion to eighty-two billion dollars. Now, I know we've tried to explain in the past, it's extremely complicated. We were going to try to put it in a slightly different way. But to help you visualize why the employer's share is expected to go up, you just, you have to go back and look to the rules of the funding plan. Those rules say that the employers are responsible to pay back to the defined benefit program the impact of the benefit increases that took place in the late nineties. So any, so since the adoption by the legislature of higher benefits in the late nineties, we have been paying higher retirement benefits to our retirees. So that incremental, that increase in benefit, the employers are responsible to pay back CalSTRS for this. There was also a benefit change that took place in nineteen ninety-nine that members were still sending their eight percent to CalSTRS. But for a ten-year period, two percent of that amount was deposited into the defined benefit supplement program instead. The employers are also responsible to pay that back. But the key here is, in addition to paying those amounts back, employers have to pay back the missed investment earnings on those. So it's like having a debt that is tied to the actual return that we have. So in the year when we earned twenty-seven percent like last year, it's a great year. But the way it works for the employers, unfortunately, their share goes up at twenty-seven percent as well. That is why when we have good returns, we would generally see an increase in what the contribution rate that the employer owes. So with this, I just wanted to show you where we see contribution rates heading now for the next few years. For the employers, if you recall last June when you adopted the employer contribution rate, we sort of knew a lot of these changes were, were coming and we recommended that we keep the employer rate at nineteen point one. Because we knew that that could be where we would be long-term. And in fact, now that we, we have the newer data, we expect that the employer rate on average will stay around nineteen point one through the end of the funding plan. So, but on, I want you to focus on the bottom line, which is the state. So right now, because the state's share is going to go down, as per our board valuation policy, we could be in a position next year when we come in May to lower the state contribution rate. So I think right now, our plan when we come in May next year is probably to present you some options with respect to the state contribution rate. We're still a little bit, I think we, we likely will take a careful approach next, next May and maybe not recommend to lower the state contribution rate because of other uncertainties. But the one, one thing I want you to be aware, if you look at the chart, the contribution rate for the state is expected to be around two percent for most of the funding plan. And this has to do with a specific wording in the funding plan, in, in statute that says that if, once the state has eliminated its share, its share of the unfunded liability, that their contribution rate reverts back to two percent, the rate that was in place before the funding plan. So once this happens, if it does happen in the two thousand and twenty-three valuation, you will no longer be able to set a supplemental rate for the state until such day that a non-funded liability or reappears for the state. But right now, if it stays the course, the state's supplemental contribution rate will go away in twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's, so that- So that's, so that could be our future, which is great news, it means we're, it's much better. If you look at it just a year ago, we thought the state contribution rate would have to hit 10%. It's now 2. So one year of return made an 8% difference. That's, that's also something to keep in mind, if we were to see a negative year where we earn well below 7%, things could change quickly. But that's, which that brings me to, in the report, we have a lengthy discussion about all the risks that we keep track of, risk measures, we just want to re-highlight here again, although everything looks much more positive today. I don't think we'll ever be able to come here and tell you there's 100% certainty we'll be able to achieve full funding, just because of the inherent investment risk that we have in our portfolio, but two things I just want to highlight. In the report, we have, we have a lot of risk measures, we have some where we look at what's the likelihood we're gonna reach full funding. Just want to show you again what the investment return did last year. It has helped improve that, that probability. If we worry about low funded status, same thing. Big reductions in those probabilities. So overall, a very positive year. Good impact on our, on our funding plan. We're in a much stronger position now than just a year ago to be able to reach full funding. And with this, basically, as we do all the time, we're monitoring the funding plan and what we're gonna do over the next few months, few years, we're just, we'll keep monitoring a couple of the assumptions that, as Rick alluded at the beginning, price inflation is one of them, although price inflation has been on the rise lately. Many economists still predict lower long-term inflation than what we currently assume. Investment return, interest rates remain low, Chris has mentioned several times that it puts pressure on our ability to earn 7%. And the one we're paying the most attention with is whether we call the wage and payroll growth assumption, it's really the one tied to the number of teachers. And the reason, we had the chart in the report that I just wanted to put up here. It's the expected, the, the number of students enroll in K through 12 in public schools in California. In June, the Department of Finance updated their projections of K through 12 enrollment. What we have here on the screen is the historical number going back to 96, 97 and projected to 30, 31. During the COVID pandemic, California saw its largest decline in enrollment in one year. 160,000 students dropped out of K through 12. You can see it on the chart, but what we're gonna be monitoring mostly is the fact that there's an expectation and enrollment will drop by almost another 10% over the next decade. So we're gonna keep watching that to see if it translates yes or no into more, into less teachers who participate in the defined benefit program. So that's probably the one we're gonna be on the lookout most for over the next few years. And with this, the last thing I wanted to point out is what you're gonna see from us over the next couple of months. So in January, we plan to come back in front of you. Mostly, when the funding plan was passed, the board adopted a board valuation policy. We know more about the funding plan now than we do back, we knew back then, so we may, we're gonna bring to you a review of the policy and we may recommend some minor tweaks to it, so we will talk about that more in, in January. May next year, as a reminder, is when we'll present to you the 2021 valuation, we'll, you'll get to approve the state rate and the employer rate. And just as a reminder, because we talked about us monitoring the assumptions, we do a formal review every four years. I just want to remind everyone, our formal review of the assumptions for us, we will start the work in 22, 23. We're gonna work jointly with investment staff. And you're gonna start to see some discussions, which you probably related to the asset allocation sometime in calendar year 23. But we expect to have a final package for a review of the actual assumptions in front of you around January of 2024. So with this.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Rick. Let's get right to questions. Mr. Prasang.
Again, David and Rick, what a great report and thank you for explaining the obligation of the employer as it relates to the returns. My question goes to the, the process by which you determine the impact on the fund and also the impact in terms of the smoothing process. You use a three-year smoothing process to determine the impact on the fund. And similarly, do you use that three-year smoothing process to determine the rate of increase that the employer has to pay to pay back the obligation, the interest on sort of the note? Is that, is that what you do?
That, that's correct. So if you look at it, yes, so we have, so the three-year asset smoothing is there, so in order to, like, how much of the investment gain do we release in the funding at a time? So we're gonna release a third. And then once we've released it, now we have a funding period that is set by the funding plan, which is to pay off the unfunded liability by 2046. So that's sort of a, that's sort of how it floats into the rate. We first have to identify what's the new portion, if you want, that is being created by the investment performance. We release a third of it and then that piece, you can view it as a a mortgage, if you want, that now has a, right now has a 25-year payment period.
Like a variable rate.
Correct. And it's based, when it comes to the employer, it's based on a variable rate, basically. Yes.
And then on another point, with regard to the amount of enrollment, I, I read today someplace on my telephone that the community college students that are, are not enrolling this year, a substantial decrease in enrollment in, in community colleges. And all of your slides show K through 12, but are community colleges included in that as well?
They are, and I read the same article last night and it's interesting. So it's always been hard to get enrollment projections through community college and that article actually talked about the same thing. But we are monitoring that as well. Keep in mind that out of the 429,000 teachers that we have, about 40,000 are community colleges, so the numbers are smaller. But we did see a decrease for them as well. But where we saw the biggest decrease, many of the community college teachers actually do not participate in the defined benefit program. They participate in our cash balance program because they are part-time teachers. So this is actually where we have seen the biggest percentage decrease last year, is in the cash balance program. We saw almost a 15% decline in the number of community college teachers who participated in the cash balance program. So it's interesting because we have, and that program is just the way it's funded, it's not really impacted too much when we lose teachers, but this is where we're seeing it more. But we did lose about 3,000 community college teachers in the defined benefit program.
Great, thank you.
Backman?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I have a question about the state rate. So I think when we set the state rate, we are limited to a half a percentage point increase every year. So according to your chart, it looked like their liability would be completely paid off within three years. Would, if the board decided to then start decreasing the rate, would it be limited to half percent as a decrease or can you decrease it?
Right now, in statute, there are no limit on the decrease. Right now, our board valuation policy has no limit as well. This is probably one thing we're thinking about bringing as a minor tweak to the policy. We think it might be worthwhile to have limit on decreases for the state contribution rate as well. But right now, we've, that chart we prepared was in, consistent with the board valuation policy, which does not impose a limit on reductions, which is what the statute says as well, but there, we don't see any anything that would limit us from including in our valuation policy a limit. So we're thinking about putting that and bringing that to you as a discussion item in January.
I think that'd be certainly worth it, the discussion, because I, you know, I think it would be very dangerous to decrease it too much and then go through a couple of years of bad investment returns.
Yeah, that, that's probably our biggest fear right now about lowering the state contribution rate because of our limitations, if we have to increase it again.
Is that the same situation for the employer rates with reductions?
No, so on the employer, when the funding plan was passed, it had a, it basically said increases or decreases are limited to 1%. So, but the statute never had a limit on decreases for this.
And I read a couple of weeks ago that the governor announced that next year's budget would most likely include some additional funding for pension funds. And I'm not sure if it's, I'm sure it's early in the process now, but do you know if that's gonna be targeted toward buying down the contribution rate from employers or?
We don't know yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No other questions from board members, some observations just before you go? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Yamamoto, go ahead.
Karen, I'm just kind of thinking. So thank you for the report. I always, you know, we've been talking about risk with a capital R. And so, you know, we talked about the funding of, or the risks of longevity, the less, the risk of the investment returns, COVID-19, and, and just about the issues of just, just the low returns, basically, right? So, and that's for investment. Have you factored in anything about issues related to any impacts of divestment and how that might impact us as far as getting to full funding or is that something that's kind of way in the background or we're not gonna deal with it or, or how does that play into, because we've had so much pressure from the public, we've had pressure from other companies, systems, things like that. So I'm just kind of thinking about that and wondering if that's even something that, that I shouldn't be worried about or what?
No, it's a great question. I was about to phone a friend, but my friend arrived.
The actuaries have them.
Very few, but we do.
That makes one for me. A complex question, Karen. Yes, you should worry about it. I worry about everything. We have roughly estimated that, you know, some divestments are de minimis and very tiny and don't affect it. A big underpinning of that 7% is that half the portfolio is in global equity. You assume global equity will generate a certain return. Any divestment that takes away from that, potentially, obviously a divestment could potentially make money, but it adds tracking error. And so something big like fossil fuels would be as much as a half a percent tracking error. I would go to, to David and to Rick and say, we're not gonna earn seven, we're gonna earn six and three quarters or 670. They would have to rerun these numbers and it would reduce your probability of hitting that funding plan at all. Right now, I think we've improved it above 50, 50. Thank goodness, but you'd be back below a 50% chance of making the funding plan, so. I want to be clear, to date, everything the board generally has done has been very de minimis. One or two stocks, very little impact on the portfolio, except tobacco. We haven't measured that in a while, but it's, it's sizable. The ones that people are pushing on the pressure now would also be an entire industry, and so those are very sizable. And they link right back to the actuary.
Okay. So, so it's not unrealistic then for me to worry about something like that?
No, it's not.
Okay. And you're worried about it too, so that's good. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Ms. Yamamoto. Couple of observations before we finish up the item. I think Chris just said it, I think the number was instead of 50, 50, that great return last year brings us 57, 43, or I think that's what it was.
Yes, correct.
That's a nice move in the right direction. It shows the importance of the performance last year. Pulls forward the, the likelihood of reaching full funding, assuming we hit 7% on an annual basis by 10 years, by a decade. That's great news. The state's portion of the unfunded liability shrinks and actually becomes a net positive. That's great news. On the flip side of the coin, observations were the employer contribution will go up. Thankfully, we have an administration that has been exceedingly supportive of K-14 public education. We're very appreciative of administration support, which helps our employers. But there's downward pressure on the number of projected students in K-14 public education, which we need to monitor quite closely, which I conclude those factors all will lead to us relying more and more on investment returns and monitoring the cost and capture ratio, those issues, the board, this investment committee discussed yesterday. If I were to wager, I would say investments are gonna become more and more important to the sustainability and viability of this fund. So I hope I captured the report well. It's a great report, appreciate it. Thank you very much, everyone. So, go ahead, Gavin.
So I have one more comment when we're finished. One more. So as, as many of you received a letter from Mark Allemann that he is actually going to retire, so one of our consultants will be retiring at the end of the year. And so Mark is, and their group are on Zoom, so they will turn on their cameras. Mark would like to say a word or two, and he's very appreciative.
We are there.
There they are. Mark, it's time here. So Mark, can you wave, Mark?
Hello.
So would you like to say a word or two?
Yeah, that, I would, I would really appreciate that. Thanks, Rick. I am retiring at the end of the year and I thank you for this chance to say goodbye. I was once a teacher and I know it's tough, but no profession is more important to our future. So I want to personally thank all of the educators on the board and in the audience because what you do is so important. I want to express my deep appreciation to the board for the opportunity to serve the educators of California. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with a group focused on the mission of securing the financial future and sustaining the trust of Californian educators. It has also been a pleasure working with the board and the CalSTRS staff, especially Rick and David. I wish you all the best and I'm happy to know that I'm leaving you in good hands with Nick, Scott and Julie. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick to kick off some brief introductions.
Departure, I just want to take a moment to introduce the key members of the Milliman CalSTRS team and I promise to keep it brief. As most of you know, I'm Nick Collier. I've been working with CalSTRS since the days of the old building. So I'll spare you any additional details about me, but I did want you to meet two key members of our team. We've added Scott Prepper now to fill the void left by Mark's retirement. Also currently on the team is Julie Smith, but you've seen her name on her reports for a number of years. Julie, you want to do a quick bio of yourself? You can turn it over to Scott.
Sure. So yes, I'm Julie Smith. I'm an actuary at Milliman in Seattle, where I've been for about 12 years now, and I primarily work on public sector clients. So I've been on the CalSTRS team for about 11 years. As far as my role on the team, I'm the valuation actuary, which means I'm involved in all phases of the actuarial work and I manage the team. So I work closely with Nick on pretty much everything. So happy to be here to say hi and introduce myself and then also wanted to introduce Scott.
Thanks, Julie. My name is Scott Prepper. I'm based out of our Portland, Oregon office. I have over 17 years of actuarial consulting experience, including the last 10 with Milliman. Throughout that time, public pension plans have been a big focus of mine. So while I'm relatively new to the CalSTRS team, I have a lot of good experience with other kind of complex public systems, including the state of Oregon, PERS, where I've been assigned actuary for over a decade now. So I'm very excited to be part of the team and to help serve CalSTRS going forward.
So that's all we have, except to say we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you so much.
So I want to make one more comment. So I've known Mark Allemann for, and worked with him for over 30 years and, and, and in the private sector at Milliman, so. And he's been, always been a professional and a pleasure, a gentleman to work with. And like I say, he did come with, he was a math teacher in the state of Washington for a number of years before he became an actuary. So he was probably the perfect choice to, to join our team when Mark Johnson retired, so. So that's all I'd like to say, but happy retirement, Mark.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Chair.
Julie and Scott, welcome to the team. Look forward to meeting you in person and Nick continued work. Mark, thanks so much for your service to CalSTRS and your very kind and heartfelt words. We wish you nothing but good health and God bless you in retirement, brother. Take care.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of skiing, so.
Good. Have fun. So we're moving right along to item number 11, with, which is the state federal legislation report by Jocelyn. And I know we have someone logging in from Washington. So Joyce Lynn, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Joyce Lynn Martinez-Wade, Director of Governmental Relations. I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on the disposition of our sponsored bills at the end of the 2021 legislative session. I'm going to start with AB 551, the CalSTRS IRA bill. And I wanted to start off by thanking Assemblymember Rodriguez for authoring the bill and for all of the hard work he and his staff put in, along with our member representative groups as it moved through the process. Unfortunately, they won't be able to move the bill forward next year. So internally, we'll be working on strategies on how to approach that bill in the future. Next, I wanted to go to SB 634, our annual housekeeping bill. That bill was signed, that's good news. And probably the news I'm most excited to share with you is AB 539, our investment procurement bill was signed. That was wonderful news. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Assemblymember Cooley and his staff for their dedication to the policy issues in that legislation. It was a cross-functional team effort here at CalSTRS. And I want to thank investments, procurement, enterprise strategy management, especially the continuous improvement team, legal and governmental relations and all the people in those areas who worked tirelessly on, you know, answering questions related to that bill and putting together all of the briefing materials and working that through the process. So that's amazing news that I'm happy to share with you. And so with those two signed bills, and if you look at the matrix, you'll see the other bills that were signed this year. We're in the process of organizing implementation of those changes to statute and that'll be ongoing. And then last but not least, I wanted to update you on legislation related to Bagley Keane. I know that you had a bit of a briefing on that earlier in the Board Governance Committee. And I wanted to let you know that much work was done on that issue and issues related to Bagley Keane last year to try to update the statute for hybrid meetings, hybrid public meetings. And we were connected to that effort through the Government Operations Agency, which is our umbrella agency. And given the timeframes last year, eventually the administration and the legislature decided to codify the executive order with a very short timeframe, as you heard this morning at the legislature's request. And I imagine that was done in anticipation of work being done over the interim on the issue with urgency legislation likely being introduced in 2022 that we can track closely. And again, I can connect through GovOps on that issue for you. That concludes my update and welcome any questions.
Thanks, Joyce Lynn.
Of course.
I don't see any questions. I know we're going to transition to John Stanton from Washington DC. So I'll leave it to you to introduce John.
John Stanton is our federal lobbyist and I'm excited to hear what he has to say about what's going on in Washington DC. Thank you.
Welcome. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be with you. I know the hour is late and the time is limited here, so I just wanted to call attention to the board that I prepared a detailed PowerPoint that's up behind you that, you know, I can only give a few highlights from in key areas, given the time constraint. But if you have questions about things I've talked about or topics I wasn't able to cover, I would encourage you to drill down into the PowerPoint. And maybe if I could get the IT staff just to move the thing to page two, if you can, that would be great. That's the slide I'll, I'll work from. And what I wanted to focus on today, given the time constraint, is CalSTRS as investor. Because the SEC in particular has been a hotbed of activity on issues that we care about. You know, whatever the hoopla going on on Capitol Hill where the Democrats can't seem to stop taking each other hostage. One of the great benefits of having a Democratic president and a Democratic Senate is that we've been able to have strong financial regulators appointed, led most particularly by the SEC Chair Gary Gensler, who's a practiced hand in Washington, had been over at the CFTC. And he's, I'll tell you, he's just like a breath of fresh air. I mean, under the prior administration, the Republicans played this game of, well, you know, corporations are only required to disclose material information. If they're not disclosing it, must not be material. So why the hell do you want it? And that left CalSTRS and other institutional investors out in the halls or pounding on the door. Well, you know, we want, we want this information to guide our investment decisions. Well, under Chairman Gensler, I'm happy to report that that door is opened. And he continually asserts that, you know, it's not up to the company to determine, you know, what to disclose. These are the folks that own the, own the company. And information that they want to help guide their investment decision to invest in the company, to continue to hold their investments, that's where the focus ought to be. And so the result of that has been a whole series of disclosure projects on areas that, you know, CalSTRS and other investors have been pursuing for years. I mean, the, the first and foremost is disclosure on climate risk. This is an area that folks have been asking for more information for years, obviously as climate change has gotten worse. And what Chairman Gensler has directed his staff to do, they're undertaking a very fulsome climate risk disclosure project where they're reaching out to industry, to scientific community, really trying to develop a, you know, a good school of knowledge to base these rules on. And what Chairman Gensler has directed them to do is to say, it's got to be decision useful. Can't be like this boilerplate that, you know, the ice glaze over after the 15 single spaced pages in the 10K. It's got to be information that's, you know, consistent across companies, has qualitative disclosures. And how's the company managing for this quantitative disclosures? Well, the metrics, how are they doing on it? And I, I'm very encouraged by the level of effort that's being devoted at the SEC. And I think, you know, it's a long games, I've said all along, but I think there's been really tremendous progress. And now industry is starting to come around that this is important information. Even the National Association of Manufacturers has endorsed climate risk disclosure. Now they want, you know, principles based rather than a bunch of specific rules. But it shows you how far we've come. We still have a ways to go, but I think this is a tremendous step forward. And there's not a specific timetable yet, given kind of the magnitude and the complexity of this project. But it's so encouraging. Another area that CalSTRS has historically been interested in disclosure is in human capital management. There's been some guidance that's come out, you know, over the last couple of years, but there's clearly interest in more because CalSTRS invests in a lot of industries where the company's assets go down in the elevator every night. I mean, tech, for example. And so there's a strong interest in really learning how the company, you know, recruits, how do they develop their workforce, how do they retain their workforce? And I'm encouraged that, again, the SEC is really delving into this. And I'm very hopeful that there'll be a lot of good information coming out because as we increasingly shift to kind of a services-based, tech-based economy, you know, this is critical information. Another area, the diversity area that California has been, of course, a leader at this state level, state law. But the SEC is pursuing a disclosure project with respect to the diversity on corporate boards and senior management, on disclosing the, the racial, ethnic and gender composition of the board and whether the company has a plan to promote diversity. If so, what is it? And I think it's quite telling when, as you know, earlier this year, the SEC approved NASDAQ's, you know, pretty aggressive diversity proposal where the, you know, company had to have at least two un, under, two members of the board from underrepresented communities. And if they didn't, they had to explain why not. So again, I think that's a very positive development of an area. I know there's been of interest historically. Executive comp, well, that was ignored under the Republican SEC. But one area in particular, they have a number of projects going on, but one area in particular has to do with these Rule 10B5 executive stock trading programs. And this is one that the CalSTRS investment staff has told me they have significant interest in it because they're concerned that, you know, there's mischief going on. You know, they have these multiple plans, they have plans that they sort of turn on and off. And Chair Gensler has recognized that. He's noted that there are gaps in the current law rules. So he's directed the staff to really look into what they can do in this area to try to reform it. He's saying, well, maybe we ought to have cooling off periods, you know, so, and maybe we ought to have, you know, a single plan around these plans that can kind of go on and off and the executive can basically trade whenever he wants. So again, I think this is a positive development to address an area that's been of concern to investors. The next area I'd like to kind of address has to do with proxy vote. And obviously, CalSTRS has been very active in this area, very successfully. And particularly in the recent, recent months, he's been live at five. Congratulations. One of the things the SEC is doing is to try to undo the damage of the prior administration. One area that they've suspended the rule is proxy advisor rule, very controversial rule when it was adopted. You know, it subjects the proxy advisor firm to securities fraud liability. If they make some mistake or they don't, you know, disclose the right source of information, you know, really a hammer over it. And it gives the issuer a chance to review the draft before it's finalized. And indeed, it was so overreaching, the initial version of the rule, they would have given the issue another bite at the apple to review it before you even got it. That, they couldn't keep that with a straight face. But the upshot is the SEC has suspended the application of those rules. They're being sued in court by the National Association of Manufacturers for doing so. But I think that's, that's a courageous step to try to figure out what they can do to address, but you know, the controversial elements of those. A related area where they're, again, trying to undo perceived damage by the prior administration as to a shareholder resolutions. One of the things that the prior SEC had done was to raise the thresholds for submitting ownership thresholds and duration thresholds for resubmitting resolutions. You know, they're saying, well, trying to get rid of the, you know, the little ladies tennis shoes, keep bringing these things up. Evelyn White Davis, blah, blah, blah. Well, the problem is, is that, you know, there's some initiatives, like climate is a good example, where it took, you know, time for people to be educated about what was important. And there was a growing support for these climate risk disclosure resolutions as they, you know, were reconsidered over time. So the SEC hasn't suspended it, but they're trying to figure out what changes they ought to make in that area. And then there are two, two sets of rules that apply to private plans but are of interest to us. And this was a situation where the Trump administration's Labor Department was trying to throw hurdles in the path of private plans voting on proxies. They had one that just put this test that was almost insurmountable for a private plan to vote a proxy by saying, well, you know, you had to show this direct economic benefit and you, the fiduciary, had to make this independent investigation of all the material fash, couldn't rely on your proxy advisor. Well, you know, they're trying to encourage people saying, well, hell, I don't want to bother with that and sort of chill the activity. Now, again, these weren't rules that applied to us, but you know, when you're trying to gin up a coalition to pursue a proxy matter and picture a company, private plan participation obviously is very helpful. So the Biden administration said, we're not going to enforce that rule. So maybe on the books, but we're not going to enforce it. A similar sort of situation in the private plan and ESG investment area. I mean, the, the Trump administration is very derisive about ESG investments. Again, it was, you know, the tree huggers, the little ladies and tennis shoes. So they had this rule governing private plans that in order to make an ESG investment, they had to do all this economic analysis, it's independent factual investigation, you know, again, to throw up a hurdle. And so, you know, we were very concerned that that rule would chill the marketplace for ESG type investments because, you know, it would have taken a big hunk of the private blank, you know, the private blank community, big hunk of the institutional investors sort of off the field. So the Biden administration not only reversed that rule, but they put out a series of guidelines to try to encourage ESG investments to say to plans, you know, here are some standards you can apply when you're considering those. So again, I think it's, you know, there's the positive of new projects and then there's the positive of undoing some of the past damage that was done. Let me just quickly touch upon two last things in the investment area, and that is, Chair Gensler has indicated that he's asked the staff to look into the arrangements between, in the hedge fund area and the private equity fund area, the arrangements between the general partner, investment managers and the limited partner investors like CalSTRS. The ILPA, the International Limited Partners Association, that you guys have been part of, has been pushing this for quite some time. And I think they've found a kindred spirit in Chair Gensler, who said, again, he hasn't, they're not a formal rulemaking, but he's asked the staff to look into what he described as whether the GPs are, investment managers are living up to their duties under their contracts with the investors and under the law. So that's an, again, an area I think could be fruitful in terms of protecting the investor interests in these arrangements. Last thing in the investment area is that the proxy plumbing, the screen lining, the proxy process itself, Chair Gensler's indicated that the staff has developed a, a proposed rule on to provide for a universal proxy card. So you're not just stuck with the insurgents card or the management's card all beyond one card. And that's something CalSTRS and the investment staff has been pursuing for years. So all of this I find very encouraging because, you know, you read a lot about gridlock in Washington and Democrats can't get out of each other's way on the Hill. But meanwhile, on the regulatory level, there's games afoot. And I think CalSTRS interests as investor are really well-served by all these things that I've outlined. The last thing I wanted to cover, and I know, again, you've got to move on to other things, is our old friend WEP, the WEP Office and against social security benefits. It's of great interest to our retirees, as we know. And I'm really disappointed to say that we're in the same position we were last year when I sat in front of you. The, there have been this very promising bipartisan effort by House Ways and Means Chairman Richie Neal from Massachusetts and ranking Republican Kevin Brady from Texas, both of whom had significant numbers of non-covered employees in their districts. They come up with some, they were striving to have bipartisan legislation. They come up with some early drafts and then for a reason that's still not clear, it's fractured. So they each went forward with their own separate bills that would make, you know, they're sort of similar. They would make reforms for the future so they get rid of these arbitrary formulas that, you know, be devil members, CalSTRS members, because it, you know, has all these cliffs and that sort of thing. And they base it on actual earnings, but it's really only for employees going forward. For current participants, because it's so expensive, you know, it's sort of this nominal payment that they would make. Neil would be 150 bucks a month, Brady 100 dollars a month to existing participants to try to sort of ameliorate the impact of WEP. Well, you know, 150 bucks is 150 bucks, but, you know, given the magnitude of the impact of the WEP, I think a lot of the groups, employee groups have kind of lost interest in this legislation. Unfortunately, they've sort of shifted their attention to these repeal bills, which are, you know, they're sort of feel-good legislation, let's repeal the damn thing. But, you know, it's so expensive, especially if you're going to try to repeal both WEP and GPO at the same time, that, you know, they really, in my estimation, don't have a viable prospect of moving forward. So I think some of the air has gone out of, you know, what had been the sort of most meaningful reform effort in years. So we'll have to see. I mean, hopefully, you know, the situation will improve. They can get these big Biden bills out, out the door. Maybe they'll have time to do this, but you know, it's always, the thing you always run into is you get all these members from other states that are covered by social security and say, well, all my people are in the sky. It hasn't fallen and you got to go through the whole exercise of explaining why, you know, bringing folks like, they're outside the social security system into it now drives up employer costs because it's not, you know, it's basically a benefit that doesn't get the benefit of being funded by the investment earnings that you were just hearing about from David and Rick. So it's disappointing, but in a way not surprising. But anyway, I, I know you've got lots of other things to cover and it's getting late. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to entertain any questions, right from board members through the staff. But, you know, and if, I don't know if you want to take any questions now, however you'd like to proceed. I'm at your disposal.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you for being our ears and our eyes in Washington DC. You've always been very responsive and accessible. Anytime that I've reached out to you, and I would encourage my fellow board members to do the same on anything that's happening, all things in Washington DC that relate to CalSTRS. So appreciate you, again, representing us in the Capitol. Thank you, John. Thank you, Joyce Lynn. The board's preference, do you want to continue to move through or would you like to take a short break? We will keep going. Okay. We will keep going. Okay. Julie? Item 12 is the review of CalSTRS' basic financial statements.
Thank you, Chair Keely, members of the board. Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here with Art Martinez. He is our Director of Financial Planning, Accounting and Reporting.
One second.
Oh.
Did you let the hair grow out through the pandemic?
I couldn't find a good barber.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you're the same guy. That's all. It's been a long time. That's good. Okay.
All right, well, we are reviewing CalSTRS' basic financial statements for you today for our fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. As reported to the ARM Committee yesterday, our auditor Crow issued an unmodified opinion for our basic financial statements, which means that it is free of material misstatements and presented fairly in all material respects. So that's great news. Now, Art and his senior manager, Banky Fatunla, and his teams work very, very closely with others in the organization to gather the data that they need to prepare quality financial statements. And I just want to thank them for their hard work and really congratulate them on achieving the successful outcome. Now, more good news to report, also the Government Finance Officers Association issued us two awards, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and an outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting for our June 30, 2020 financial reports. And details for those awards was included in Cassandra's CEO report back in item number seven. So with that, I will turn it over to Art to provide you with highlights of this year's financials.
So thank you for the recognition and I just want to thank everybody else that was involved in putting the financial statements together. It's a, it's a long process, it takes a lot of hard work and time and effort from a lot of people within the organization to compile all those numbers and all that information to get to the financial statements that you have in front of you today. And then after all that's done, then we have to go through an audit with Crow, which is pretty rigorous. So with that said, so the financial statements is dense with a lot of information, a lot of numbers, a lot of accounting numbers. So rather than going through it in detail, page by page, late Friday afternoon, I was just going to provide a high-level overview of the financial statements and touch upon some of the key elements that I thought might be noteworthy to you. So as I'm going through my presentation, I'll be referring to the financial statements, which are attachment one to this agenda item. And I'll be referencing the page numbers that you'll see up in the right-hand corner. So with that said, so there were no new Gatsby's that we implemented this last fiscal year and there were no significant changes in the accounting or financial reporting for our organization. As Julie had mentioned, we received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And so if you turn your attention to page three, this is where you'll find Crow's independent auditor report. And so within this report is the unmodified opinion. And so in addition to the independent auditor's report, the financial statements are comprised of several other sections. We have the management discussion and analysis, the financial statements themselves, the note disclosures, the required supplementary information, and then other supplementary information schedules. So if you turn your attention to page six, this is where the management discussion and analysis starts. And so the purpose of this is to provide a high-level analytical overview of the financial, the financial organization and the significant events that occurred and the financial activities that occurred during the year. It's meant to be somewhat of an easy to understand, easy to read document. It's, it's, it's written for a broad audience. It's really to help them put into context the financial activities that occurred during the year so that they can get a better understanding of how to sort of assess the financial condition of CalSTRS. It also serves as an introductory to the financial statements themselves. So if you turn your attention to page 23, so this is where the financial statements really start. And here we have the statement of fiduciary net position. And so this really acts sort of like our balance sheet, it provides information on our assets and liabilities, but the difference being recognized as net pension or net position. You can see that the statement's broken up between the state teacher's retirement plan, the pension two plans, the Medicare premium payment program, and the teacher's deferred compensation plan. And so if you turn your attention to the column on the right, the total column, you'll see, and go down a little bit, you'll see that the total investment assets were approximately $341 billion. So by far, the investment assets are the largest asset on our balance sheet. They make up pretty much everything, they dwarf everything. If you scroll down the total column, a little bit further down towards the bottom, you'll see that our total liabilities for the year were approximately $40.7 billion. And then if you go to the bottom corner right, you'll see that our net position for the year was $312 billion. So our net position increased by approximately $64 billion over the previous year. So that's about a 25% increase in the net position of the organization. And again, that was driven by the strong investment return of 27.2%. If you turn your, turn the page, page 24, this is our statement and changes in fiduciary net position. This acts like our income statement, so provides information on the additions and deductions of the organization, which are essentially revenues and expenses. And so if you look at the total column again, on the right, you'll see that our total contributions for the year were approximately $13.4 billion. That's for the employer member and state. So this is a slight decrease from the previous fiscal year. Or previous last year, we recognized 14.5 billion. And so the reason for the decrease was that there was a reduction in the employer contribution rate pursuant to legislation. And there was also a decrease in the one-time supplemental payments that we received from the state compared to the previous year. If you scroll down a little bit further in the total column, you'll see that the net investment income for the year was $67 billion. So that's about a 50 billion, it's about a $57 billion increase over the previous fiscal year when we had net income of $10 billion. So these additions or revenues are offset by the deductions or the expense of the organization. And by far, the largest expense for CalSTRS is going to be for the benefit payments. So again, looking at the total column, towards the bottom, you'll see that the benefit payments for the year were $16.4 billion. And that's excluding purchasing power protection payments and refunds. So that's about a 4.4% increase over the previous fiscal year, which is consistent with the historical trends. And the increase is primarily attributable to an increase in retired members and then also the 2% benefit adjustment that gets added each year. And then scrolling down, a little bit further down, you'll see again that the increase in net position says here was 63.7, which again, approximately was $64 billion. So turning our attention to the notes, to the next page, this is where we have the notes to the basic financial statements. And so the notes really are there to assist a reader to better understand the numbers that they're seeing in the financial statements. There's a lot of detailed information that discusses how those numbers are calculated, provides additional information with regards to those to help, you know, someone if they want to evaluate again the financial condition of the organization. So we have several notes, I wasn't going to go through all of them, I was going to focus on just a few that are probably the most pertinent to your, maybe noteworthy. And so the first two notes, note one and note two really provide an overview of CalSTRS, the various plans and plans that we offer. And it also provides some of the significant accounting policies that really guide our accounting and guide the framework for financial reporting. So turning to page 35, this is one of the more important notes that we have in the financial statements. This is note three, and this is the note for net pension liability. And here we provide information on the net pension liability, the actuarial assumptions and methodologies that go into calculating it. And so if you look at the first table, you'll see that the net pension liability for the year was $45.5 billion. That net position as a percentage of total pension liability was 87.2%. So this is like a significant improvement over the previous fiscal year, where we had 96.9 billion as the net pension liability and 71.8% as the ratio of the net position to total pension liability. And so again, this is primarily driven by the strong investment returns. Something to note about these numbers is that, again, these are going to be widely different than what you see when the actuaries present the actual evaluation to you that's done for funding purposes. So the reason for the difference is that these are based on accounting guidance, accounting pronouncements, whereas those valuations for funding purposes are based on board policies and industry standards used for managing the funding of the plan. The other thing to note about this MPL is that it doesn't show up as a liability on our financial statements. What happens is that per accounting guidance, both the state and the employers would be required to report their proportionate share of this liability on their financial statements. So turning to page 38, again, since the investments are such the largest asset on the financial statements, they're going to have the most real estate dedicated to the note disclosures. So those, those disclosures really start on, on this page 38. Here in this one, we, we provide information with different risks associated with investment portfolio, really kind of centering around credit risk, interest rate risk, concentration risk and foreign currency risk. And then we also provide a lot of information with regards to various investment policies and information with regards to the derivatives and the various risks associated with those as well. Turning your attention to page 39, which is the next page over, this is a schedule that we provide on the investments. And so it's very, it's very informative, a schedule, it provides information with the breakout of the investment assets, breaks it out by investment type. So it's very descriptive in terms of, you know, all the different types of investments we have in the organization and across the different programs and their amounts. Turning your attention to page 53, note six is for fair value measurement. So again, this is a very important footnote for the financial statements. As auditors expressed yesterday, they spend a lot of time, you know, looking at the fair value of the investments. And so this footnote provides a lot of information with regards to the valuation techniques, approaches, assumptions, methodologies and inputs that are used to determine the investment values that show up on the financial statements. If you turn the page over to page 54, this is what we call the fair value leveling hierarchy. And so again, very detailed table, but it provides you, provides the reader information with regards to the investment types, provides information with regards to the types of inputs that are used to determine the fair value of the investment and the observability of those inputs. Now, draw your attention to page 60. So here we have, this is where the required supplementary information schedules start. And in here, we have a lot of details with regards to the net pension liabilities, the different components that make up the net pension liability. Provides a lot of information across the years, so it provides a historical perspective on it. I think one of the more interesting tables, again, informative tables, would probably be on page 62. And so on this table, it provides a lot of historical information with regards to the net pension liability and sort of how it's changed over the years. And so if you look at the fourth column from the left, you'll see the net pension, it's the MPL of employers in the state. Gives you information with regards to how that net pension liability has changed over the years. And you can see again, for this last fiscal year, it was $45.5 billion. In the previous year, it was 96.9. And then in the years before that, it was hovering around the 90 billion range. So again, the significant improvement was because of the strong investment performance over the last year. And then sort of, again, to wrap up the financial statements, we then turn our attention to page 67. And this is where we have the other supplementary schedules or other supplementary information. And here we have schedules to provide information on the breakout of our administrative expenditures across a number of different categories. And we also have some very detailed schedules that show our consulting, what our expenditures were for consulting and professional services, broken out by vendor for both administrative and for investment purposes. So that would be the schedules that follow page 65 or 67. So with that said, that is my whirlwind tour of the financial statements. There's not going to be a test, but, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information in here. I was trying to draw your attention just, I think, to the things that you probably hear the most about and just wanted to show you where they fall in the financial statements. So on top of that, as I mentioned earlier, we didn't have any new accounting pronouncements that we implemented this last fiscal year, but there are a couple that are going to impact us this year. And so we have GASB 98. For those of you that aren't familiar with GASB, it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And so GASB 98 was passed or issued this, this October. And what it does is it essentially changes the title of our annual financial report, which was previously called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and it had a certain acronym that, that, you know, it sounds like a racial slur to, to many people. And so they changed the title of the report to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And so it's gone from Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So they've switched a couple of the words. But again, the reason for the change is that the acronym associated with the previous title sounded like a racial slur to many people. And so in alignment with the GASB's commitment to inclusiveness, they made a decision to make the change to the title. And so we'll be making the change as well and we'll incorporate that into the annual financial report that we'll be issuing this December.
Can I just add, that's not an easy acronym now, so we'll probably be referring to our report as the annual report.
Yeah. So again, we'll be, we'll be issuing that, sending that off to the GFOA for their rewards program again towards the end of December. And then we have one other pronouncement that's going to impact us this year, and that deals with lease accounting. It's GASB 87. So historically, we've accounted for leases, our operating leases. We've recognized both lease expense and liability in the year in which the obligations incurred or the payments made. So under the new guidance, it's going to require us to, will require us to take our operating leases essentially and present value or discount the future lease payments to the present value and recognize those as both an asset and a liability on the books. And so we're, right now, we're evaluating the impacts of this to the organization. Because we have so few leases and they're not material to our financial statements, you know, it's not going to have a significant impact to us, so we'll have to decide to what extent we want to go through the implementation of that. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you have or go back to any of the pages you maybe like to look at.
Thanks, Art. Thank you, Julie. Any questions, comments? Ms. Miller?
I have three questions, just drawing. Thank you for that great presentation to both of you and to Ms. Underwood. It's nice to see you both in person. On, I, I don't fully, I've been trying to compare myself, how this financial report squares up with the collaborative report and I can't square them. So that would be maybe a good exercise, like in terms of our cost on, that start on page 67, 68 to investment management fees and then to directly to the collaborative report. They're not fully squaring, but I could be doing the math wrong. So if we could just...
Is that that report is on a calendar basis and not a fiscal year?
Yeah, is that just the, is that the only difference?
Definitely a challenge.
There's, there's going to be a number of differences between how things are kind of reflected on that report versus how they're reflected for financial reporting purposes. I think one of them most definitely is going to be probably the basis. But these, you know, like carried interests and stuff like that, we don't recognize as an expense for financial reporting purposes. Generally, those get capitalized as part of the investment value for financial reporting. And so there's, there's probably going to be significant differences between the two there.
Got it. Yeah, I figured that, I was just trying to see, and maybe that's why I can't square it on my own. It would just be nice if there was even just a little bit of coordination, just because that way it would even be a good check on our cost report in the future, not now. Just as you work together on this and the two parts of the organization work together, it could be a good exercise, maybe. Mr. Chair, if that's okay with you. And then, but just in terms of, just to Mr. Barto and the, the risk management piece of, of understanding and evaluating as we move into some form of our, you know, I, I do think the growth model of how many more vendors we have each year in terms of services to the board, services to the enterprise, services to our investment branch, obviously, they're, they're growing actually more than, than I thought. I just quickly looked at last year. So I, I think sort of understanding that growth and in our, in what we're doing and how we're using outside vendors would be helpful to understand. And that again, can be in like six months or even part of Mr. Barto's risk enterprise project he's working on in terms of vendors. But I do notice kind of a precipitous increase and, and what work is being done in-house versus out. I, I think we're, we're seeing a little bit of a creep in that area and I'd like to be mindful of that as the board. Not, not an immediate concern, just a flag for a future financial report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Don't see any other questions. I just seeing that I have one on page sixty two are the NPL of the employers and the state year over year. Page sixty two. From ninety six to forty five. It's pretty dramatic. That's solely attributable to the strong investment performance?
Yeah, primarily, that's my, yeah. So I mean, if you go back to the the financial statements, you can see, you can see that that change. I know, Rick.
No, it's okay. It's okay. You don't have to go further.
It it does show how dramatic a change we can see when we have dramatic changes in our investment returns.
Yeah, that's great.
So, Rick, there was a question on that change for the NPL from ninety six to forty five.
Yeah, it's it's investment return. So it's it's the investment, the twenty seven percent investment return is caused that big of of a decrease. So.
Okay. Terrific. Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Good. Thanks.
Is Jeff Zimmer here? Jeff? Item thirteen. The employer reporting on final benefit. Good to see you in person.
Okay.
Yep, you're on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair Keely. Good afternoon, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here in person. I'm Jeff Zimmer. I support the Employer Services Division as their director, and I'm the business lead on this particular project. So today, we wanted to provide you an update on the origins of the project and some of the background. So this began in December of twenty twenty when staff presented a legislative proposal to the board regarding these items. So it would have partially reassigned responsibility for paying overpayments in case of employer error. It extended the time for collection in cases of member fraud or misrepresentation. And it clarified the statute of limitations for collecting overpaid benefits. So at the time, the board instructed staff to continue working on the proposal. So instead of, and we agree not to bring a proposal today, because to fully address all the aspects related to the risk of overpayments, executive sponsorship created this employer reporting to final benefit project to include these three dimensions. Operational improvements, enhanced employer information and legislation and regulations. A little bit of background about overpayments and underpayments. Yesterday, in audits and risk management committee, you heard from, some of you heard from Julie Underwood and Lucy Arbuckle about the entire universe of overpayments and underpayments. So they were looking at any potential change to a benefit across any type of benefit or the reason for that change. For this project, our research and development team looked at just those benefits that adjusted because of employer initiated changes resulting from an audit, legislative changes or internal data fixes. So this is a smaller population of adjustments. And the majority of these happen within three years of benefit inception. And you can see the proportion of overpayments in the brown versus underpayments in the reddish color. And then the percentage is the number of service retirees affected. So again, this is a smaller sampling of benefit adjustments over the last four fiscal years. Additionally, staff in employer services worked with staff in financial services, looking at their adjustment data. And they isolated this further to just benefit changes that happened after six months past benefit inception, just to look at those for the last fiscal year. And a sampling of that data showed that ninety one percent of the benefits adjusted plus or minus three percent. The median change was fifty dollars and sixty one percent of the benefits adjusted positively. Now, I don't want to minimize the impact of a negative adjustment on any member. And some of these can be significant. I've spoken to members in those situations and it's difficult. Those are likely the ones that you hear about as well. But given that we pay nearly five million benefits per year to four hundred thousand benefit recipients, I wanted to give you a sense of the scope and perspect perspective of this population. Because if it's under or over or on the penny, we have a fiduciary responsibility to pay accurate benefits compliant with law based on the information we receive from our employer partners. And that was the goal prior to this project, and it will be the goal long after this project. So again, those three dimensions that I that I talked about before. So again, to fully address the risk of overpayments and even some of the beliefs that we've heard from our stakeholders, we had to do this with multiple dimensions and break it down. So we have almost forty staff across seven business areas working on seven work streams. And there's no one thing that can fix us all. There's no one magic supplement. This is diet, sleep and exercise. And the first work streams are related to operational improvements, quality assurance and audit reporting. For quality assurance, we looked at proofs of concept, things that we could try operationally about our current procedures to potentially increase the accuracy of benefit information prior to a benefit. So for example, we've already instituted a six month audit follow up. The Audit Resolution Team Employer Services had ninety seven audits last fiscal year. And for each of those, they provided immediate guidance to that employer about the findings and how to remedy them. Now we're going to look six months past that guidance to see, is that employer still reporting correctly based on that guidance for that particular behavior and that finding? Also, our compensation and review unit usually looks at benefits post inception for certain salary and special compensation thresholds. We're moving that upstream to look at what data could we analyze prior to benefit to again, increase the accuracy of that information before it becomes a benefit. And there's other other proofs of concept happening across the organization and other benefit areas that they're also trying. So we're looking at these operationally. For audit reporting, Audit Services recently published more information about employer audits on CalSTRS dot com, including the district that's audited, the date and the number of findings. We've also received feedback from our stakeholders about additional information that could be provided on that page, and we'll continue to work with them on that. The second dimension is employer information. So when we first talked about this legislative proposal or the legislative proposal that started this effort, we heard a lot of feedback from our employers that say, hey, if we, the employers, are going to be liable potentially for overpayments due to our error, we need better information from you. We need more information and clearer guidance on how to report to again, reduce the possibility of those errors. So these two work streams, very much in partnership with governmental relations and legal services, looking at our current laws and regulations related to creditable service and creditable compensation to see if there's areas that we can make more explicit or more clear in the regulations themselves. And employer information is again, building on the foundation of the employer education and training that we currently provide. For example, last year, our training and development team provided training to more than twenty one hundred employer staff across more than one thousand districts. And our employer help teams received six to seven hundred inquiries per month for ad hoc guidance for our employer partners if they have an immediate question for us. So we want to continue enhancing those educational opportunities and provide more tools so the employers can feel more confident about how they're reporting. And then legislation and regulations. So this, two work streams related here, again, huge partnership, governmental relations, legal services, looking at concepts that we could propose for benefit finalization and overpayment liability. So again, if we're going to look at statute of limitations again, and we will, about the potential of an employer being liable for error, what does that look like? And the feedback from our stakeholder groups here has not been, shall I say, universally positive. We have had a little bit of disagreement about the value of these proposals and what we've provided so far. But we continue to work with them to kind of understand what their beliefs are, which we know, they've told us many times, and how we can potentially meet those beliefs while still being fiduciaries and responsible stewards of the fund. So we're looking at those. And then the audit appeal regulations, those will further clarify the member population that can appeal an audit, the timelines and add more employer responsibilities as part of the audit appeal process. So those are also have been shared with our stakeholder groups. And the last two work streams are really fundamental to all of the others. So these are our stakeholder engagement, large involvement from our public affairs branch, how we relate to the stakeholders, provide outreach, receive feedback, and even our enterprise information management area. It helps with governance of the project itself, and we have our project management office also working on the project so that we have clear path to escalate and make decisions. So these two are really fundamental to all the issues across these work streams. Our next steps. And from the outside, it may seem like we're moving slowly. But again, to truly meet the stakeholder beliefs and address the overall risk of overpayment, the possibility of overpayments, we had to take this multi-dimensional approach. We're in the most complex wiring of our laws and our plan design. So that requires again, that effort from across the organization to make sure we're looking at the root causes and really making long term value added upgrades and improvements to these situations. So we'll continue working on our credible compensation and service regulatory updates, and that should result in a regulatory package like through OAL. We'll have to, i- it's time for a little bit of housekeeping. We have the hood up. Let's look underneath and see what we can change. That would be a regulatory package that the board may see in the future. We'll continue engagement with our member employer groups on legislative concepts and the statute of limitations. One is certainly at the forefront right now. We'll finalize those audit appeal regulations. Again, that will be a regulatory package through OAL because we'll have to update the regulations and continue to receive stakeholder feedback. We're doing that now. And we'll begin to engage them more immediately in the in the following months. And then those operational improvements about proof of concept processes and any other operational improvements we find, those are a little bit easier to adapt because we can just do them internally, should we have the resources and the time to do so, which is always a struggle sometimes. So that's what we're looking at that we can control operationally. So again, those those three dimensions of the operational improvements, enhancing the employer information, and of course, addressing legislation or regulations whenever possible. So that is a little history of the project to this point, its origins and a little bit of the background of the environment of overpayments that we're dealing. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks for the overview. No more important work in the organization than making sure we get the payments right the first time. Big organization, a lot of payments going out annually, a lot of people working to try to get this right. I don't know if there are any questions or comments from the board. I do know we have members of the public that want to dial in, but let's get to the board first. Ms. Bradford?
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff, for all your work on this. So that's November again. This was kind of our deadline. So my question is, is are we putting a new deadline on this?
Yes, we'll have to revisit that. And and because of the scope of the project, we'd have to define deadlines for which and which could come out first or what sequence of events might happen. So I think I I might be able to work with Cassandra on what are the updates to the board that we can provide in the future to keep you status on the things that are happening with the project.
Yeah, we, when we discussed at the last time we reported on this, we realized that we would be going into the next legislative cycle, and that's the the time frame that we're kind of managing against at this point on the legislative proposals.
So we still think we're going to have it ready for this this coming legislative cycle. That's that's the hope. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Indeed. And it it depends on the complexity of that legislation and the continued conversation with the stakeholder groups as well.
Thank you. I don't see any of the committee. Oh, I do. Yep, Ms. Yamamoto.
Thanks, Jeff.
Of course.
Um, when you talk about the stakeholder engagement, the stakeholder conversations and things like that, how frequent are those meetings? Are they fruitful? Are they? Are they competitive? Are they in agreement? What does that look like when you do have those conversations?
That's a great question. And we had been meeting with them, I feel like it was a series of meetings over the past few months that were, you know, every other week for a while, just to kind of get this kicked off and get their feedback and their beliefs. What's been helpful is it is a coalition of employer and member groups.
Yes. And from what I understand, that's pretty unique in this whole process.
It it very much is. So having them unified, so we can just speak to one group of, you know, CalRTA, CTA and employer groups as well. And have them be unified in what their beliefs are has made it much more easy to target these work streams that will address those beliefs. So that's very helpful. So we haven't met with them in a while because the legislation was ending previously. But we want to restart the meetings immediately because we have a lot of concepts out for them to review, and we want to get their feedback and again, explore those areas that they're not exactly super enthused about right now, but we want to understand why and see what we can do to accommodate the beliefs.
Okay. So as as the the meetings are are being developed.
Yes.
So you're presenting something to the group and they are providing feedback. They are, but you're incorporating some of the things that they have given you as far as input and not necessarily always doing the output kind of stuff.
Yes, we do receive their feedback and that which we can incorporate, and we provide them additional information about that.
Okay.
But we're certainly currently in the initial stages of kind of what their beliefs are, how we can address them, again, still by being stewards of the funds and fiduciary responsible and making sure that we listen to them and incorporate that. But it's been a back and forth, and I I'm sure we're going to hear soon that they would like it to move more quickly.
Right.
But we want to make sure that we understand what they want and be very methodical in how we respond to them so that we can provide them accurate information.
But what I understand is they did provide a list of beliefs.
Yes.
And so that's the target of conversations that are going on.
Indeed.
And focusing that and getting more input and clarification and more compromise language to reach that.
Yes. And and it's important to remember that the the legislation is but one part of it.
Correct.
So their beliefs cover the overpayment liability, the kind of information that we applied, provide to employers, when we can provide it. And make sure that they they want written guidance for employer information. And then they had beliefs about audit appeals regulations and the and the audit reporting that we have, we have met some of the beliefs and actually produced things for them to see, and we continue to receive feedback even on those things that we produced items for, for those beliefs. But we continue to talk about how we can meet some of the more contentious issues.
Right. Okay. Because there are some sticking points as we talk further.
Yes.
And so and then from what I understand, there are some points that are not not like you have to agree to disagree or something to those terms.
Basically, yes. Yeah.
But you're still having those conversations and continuing to try to understand the rationale and the belief and the alternatives to what what's on the belief and what can go the other way.
Exactly. Options and alternatives, but also allow Teresa to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Teresa Schilling, Chief Public Affairs Officer. I, Jeff, thank you very much. Did a great job explaining the complexity of what we've been working to accomplish internally in order to get to a place where we have products to to show the board, talk to the board about. And Denise, I just wanted to address your question in particular about a deadline and just suggest that we look to twenty twenty three. In in reality, this legislative cycle starts in January and it's the end of a tier session. So I think what we talked about in September was the challenge of trying to meet and get a proposal in time for this coming January. So just wanted to set some expectations that are realistic.
Thanks, Teresa. Karen, are you finished with your questions for now?
For now. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Johnson, you were there. We want to get you back in the queue. There we go.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Teresa, you actually answered my question. I had a question regarding my process with getting the buy-in and then it's just a proposal, but you clarified it. So as it stands now, twenty twenty three is the goal.
Thank you. I do know we have members of the public that would like to weigh in. So if our staff can bring in the speakers, please?
Okay, we have three callers to offer public comment, so they will get three minutes each. Our first caller will be David. David, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Dave Walrath. I'm representing the California Retired Teachers Association. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. Let me refresh everybody on the CalRTA position, which is, we believe, no retire- which is, we believe, no retiree should be held liable for mistakes they did not make, be that being overpaid or underpaid. If overpaid, then that correction, but they should not be the ones to be penalized for that because they didn't make the mistake. If they were underpaid, they should be paid correctly because they didn't make the mistake that caused them to be underpaid. We appreciate staff's work. We know there's been a tremendous amount of internal work that has occurred. However, we have not seen all of the product. We look forward to having more frequent meetings starting soon so we can see more of the product. Quite frankly, as a stakeholder, and I know there will be other stakeholders talking. We have had concerns about some of the proposals that were made and have tried to provide feedback on ways those proposals could be modified in order to address what we believe to be the core issue, which means that retirees are not harmed because of a mistake that was made by somebody else. We look forward to working with you on this issue. Sooner is much better than later. That is because the retirees are still going to be harmed until this issue is resolved. So we hope to be able to resolve it. I was unclear on Teresa's comment of whether 2023 was January 1, 2023, to implement legislation enacted in 2022, or whether it was an expectation that there would not be legislation proposed until January of 2023. Oh, we would be very concerned if it were the latter rather than the former. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Our next caller will be Kevin. Kevin, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Kevin Welch, and I'm the Chair of CTA State Council Retirement Committee. In the section entitled Employer Information, there is a statement which reads, "If CalSTRS and the stakeholder groups pursue statutory modifications to employer liability for overpayments due to employer reporting error," end quote. "We appreciate you calling out employer errors in this process, but where is the mention of system error? There is nothing in this item that demonstrates CalSTRS's willingness to take any ownership surrounding overpayment. Before our members retire, they determine the standard of living they will have based on the decades given to public service, and they count on that money to survive. When an employer reporting error or changes in CalSTRS interpretation and other actions are taken that our members have no knowledge or control over can throw their entire living situation into disarray. It is immoral, and we need to stop this injustice immediately. Retired members must not be held liable for prior overpayments except in cases of member error. Currently, the financial burden falls on our membership. Additionally, in the section entitled Employer Audit Appeals Regulations, the item suggests that the planned outcome is the ability, quote, "ability for systematic members, those not specifically named in the audit, to appeal findings and other administrative improvements," end quote. On behalf of CTA, I ask you not to spend energy creating a process CalSTRS is already obligated to do, but rather, meet the concerns of those who are paying into and benefiting from your system. During the course of an audit, inaccuracies may be found. That audit finding would require the employer to revise reporting in CalSTRS system for members and can reduce a member's benefit unexpectedly. Retirees, members, and the exclusive representative who may be impacted by an audit are not notified at the same time and do not have sufficient time for each party to meaningfully participate in the appeal process. Additionally, communication between the district and CalSTRS relevant to an appeal is not easily accessible to all parties. If CalSTRS is not willing to provide sufficient notification, notifying the retiree, the employer, and the union with sufficient time to prepare an appeal, CTA will not stand by idly and permit further denial of our members' rights. We need all information in a timeframe that will allow us to adequately prepare for the appeal."
Any seconds?
"CalSTRS has heard these concerns prepared and not responded to them as they bring back revised drafts of possible regulations. Thank you for your time."
Thank you for your comments. Our last caller will be Mary Kay. Mary Kay, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Kay Scheid, and I am the Vice Chair of CTA State Council Retirement Committee. It appears from your plan that you intend to consider exploring legislative proposals for benefit finalization. On behalf of CTA, we ask you to stop. This is the wrong path, and we have provided that feedback to CalSTRS governmental relations. The data provided by CalSTRS during stakeholder engagement sessions in July and August of this year indicated that when we are talking about benefits adjustments for our members, 82% receive an increase and 18% receive a decrease. Raising the benefit has the potential to do significant harm to our membership. If our members have earned a benefit, it is unfair that employer error or system error robbed them of that benefit simply because it has passed some arbitrary benefit finalization timeline. We do not believe this helps our members at all, and we urge you not to waste your time and resources. Additionally, this item suggests that the goal of these work streams is to further reduce the minimal frequency of overpaid benefits. We do not believe that the stakeholders' concept beliefs have been meaningfully addressed here. On a fixed income, overpayments and unexpected reductions in the retirement benefits can lead to a host of personal and financial challenges for the educator and their family. Our members are not responsible for processing payroll or providing misinformation to CalSTRS, but ultimately, and too often, they suffer severe financial consequences. These are concerns we have raised for years, and we want to move forward with our concept beliefs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. That is the last caller in the queue, right? I'm 13.
So thank you for taking the time to dial in. Jeff, everyone who's working on this issue, we appreciate your efforts. I know that everyone in this organization is committed to getting this right and has the best interest of the system and our members squarely in our front and center of mind. I would ask that the stakeholder investment beliefs that some of us have seen be shared and distributed to the full board, if that could just be sent out to everyone. Appreciate your efforts and your updates. There's a lot of interest at heart involved, and it's a complicated process, which sometimes seems like there's an easy solution. And if there was, it would have been identified already. But I do appreciate, and we appreciate, the public calling in and expressing their views and raising some of the concerns. Karen?
Thank you. The timeline, it I'm really kind of getting emotional here, but the timeline doesn't seem like something that's, it's like too far away. I would like the timeline to be the former that was discussed as far as, you know, working on the legislation, maybe this coming year, and having it to work on the implementation in '23, not starting it in '23. Because, you know, working in the legislature, you know that different bills that are already going through the process can be amended. So it doesn't have to be fully ready to go in terms of putting it, you know, putting it across the desk. So I think that I think we should do all that we can to do what we can to get it moving quicker because we've already gone past this one year that we had agreed upon this last year. So here it is, like Denise said, one year later, and we're still talking. We're not doing more and really accomplishing much that we need to do for our members. And so, and as was stated earlier, that, you know, our retirees are being hurt. And so I would like to see us push for an earlier timeframe and do what we can. And if we need to accelerate the conversations or doing that, you know, I would be more than happy to be part of that. So thank you.
So I'm looking around the dais. I don't think there's any opposition to Ms. Yamamoto's urging of an accelerated communication and a resolution to this issue. And I don't want to belabor this. And as I try to unpack all of the complexities of this matter, I can't help but think of a retiree who, eight months into her retirement, is notified of an overpayment. And that per the stat, she is responsible for making up those overpayments. For me, there has to be a line of like kind of demarcation. Can you imagine a retiree, eight years into her retirement, who's notified that she has been overpaid by X and is responsible for those overpayments? I think lumping these overpayments all into the same category is probably problematic for me personally. I just see that there's some differences here. And I, as you're trying to find resolution to it, I would urge that as the conversations with the stakeholders continue, that there's some separation between that, and legal has to get involved and a lot of factors. But the impact on the member and the impact on the system probably somewhat different, but the law comes involved. So you get my point, I think.
And to me, if there's a law, then we've got to change the law. I mean, everybody does, you know, it's done all the time. So, you know, look, don't let us stop because of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. Item 14, we're moving right along. This is an action item. Julie, back to you.
Thank you, Chair Julie. Members of the board. Again, Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer. And I'm presenting the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2223 for your approval. Now, the proposed operating budget in the amount of $374.5 million represents a $48.6 million or about 15% increase over the prior year revised budget. And that's primarily due to one large service contract as well as concepts that have already been previously approved by the board. And the concepts and contracts that are included are the same ones that we discussed with you back in September. They remain the same. So the only difference is in the overall increase amount because we received a refined estimate on the prorata assessment. But as a reminder for what those are, you can look on item 14 on page 10. And that includes $30.7 million for the JLL contract and technology expenditures, $1.7 million for 10 positions over six business areas, $8.4 million for increases in state mandates, primarily for wage escalation, and then $7.8 million for the second year of the Internal Investment Management Plan to support the collaborative model. Now, the budget does not include any adjustments for the pension solution project or the headquarters expansion project. As you're aware, those projects are still being assessed. Now, as I mentioned, in September, we did receive a state budget letter providing us guidance on reclassifying certain blanket positions. We've had a chance to review that guidance, and so added to this request is for 27 blanket positions to be reclassed from existing blanket positions to authorized permanent positions pursuant to the guidance. Now, this is a technical adjustment to align with state reporting requirements. We consider this a net zero transaction, so no additional budget dollars are required for this adjustment. Finally, as we've included in past judgments, your, or past budgets, past budgets, your approval today allows us additional flexibility for future unanticipated costs to use up to 3% of the support appropriation savings to be available for two additional years. But that would only be available upon further board approval. And it includes up to 5% above the TDCF baseline budget, and that's to grow the pension two program, should that be needed. So with that, that's a quick summary of the final budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Don't see any questions from the board. There is a resolution that's being proposed for adoption of the proposed 202223 operating budget, which is in the materials, and entertain a motion to prove that. It's moved by Ms. Erdin. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Bradford. Any discussion? Sure. Is that a roll call? Does that have to be a roll call vote? Please, Jennifer, you take the roll.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Bigwin? Mr. Johnson? Ms. Yamamoto? Ms. Higa?
Aye.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Motion passes.
Thank you. And I'll vote aye as well. I don't, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Item 15 is the consent agenda action. Anyone have any items that they want to pull? Lynn?
Thank you. Not to pull, but I think I have to read for 15, see the audit report.
Yes, okay.
Do you want the chairs to read it, or I can read both the audits and risk management and the board governance?
I would defer to you, Jennifer. Would you read those for us, please?
Be happy to.
Thank you very much.
The Audits and Risk Management Committee recommends accepting the independent financial statement auditor reports from ARM Agenda Items 5A and 5B, including the proposed resolution in Attachment 4 of ARM Agenda Item 5A. The Audits and Risk Management Committee also recommends approving the 2022 internal audit plan. And the Board Governance Committee recommends adoption of the revised 2021 fiscal year Board Governance Work Plan. Board Governance Committee also recommends adoption of the modified revisions to Section 4, Subsection G7 of the Board Governance Manual concerning third-party economic disclosure policy. And that does include the revisions that you discussed with your consultant.
Jennifer. So that brings us to item 16, which is also consent. Does anyone have any questions or comments on 16? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to information items. Any items referred by the board? Do you have any items?
I do, but did you do a vote for 15A on the consent?
We didn't. Should we do a roll call?
Really fast. Ms. Bigwin? Oh, I'm sorry. That was great. Thank you.
Can move. Is there a second? Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Okay, what do we, I'm sorry.
We're on 15A, or 15, the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
And Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Chairperson Kila, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Jennifer. So item 16 is also consent information. Anyone want to pull or discussion? Jennifer, am I okay to move on to 17?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Item 17 is an information item that is referred by the board. Any information requests?
I do have some information requests for item 18. From item 8, the headquarters expansion, to keep posted on changes to the occupancy plans and reporting on leasing. For item 9 on pension solution, there was the added request in reporting on the legacy systems and what's new versus evolving or evolution. And for item 12, I have requests for the financial statements, the cost report collaboration, and also an understanding of the use on external lenders.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And maybe some of those items, Cassandra, from the discussion enclosed, could be in a follow-up in terms of the questions that could come into communication to all of us. So just keep that, think about, maybe that could work nicely. So item 18 was, there's no information request. I mean, we just did 18. We're on 19. No, where are we, Jennifer?
We are on 19.
Where are we?
17 had nothing, and 18, I jumped straight to information requests.
Thank you. So we're on 19. Draft agenda. Cassandra, anything you want to bring to our attention?
Just that for information items, the pension solution project, we have two items, and we'll probably just have one, which we are hoping to bring an action item for the schedule and budget adjustment. We'll bring a recommendation to the board, so we'll keep that. so we'll keep that tagged for making that modification. And then the CEO/CEO mid-year performance assessment that has a dedicated date for February, so I'll take that off. We have that as a time that we have for a dedicated meeting that's off this agenda item. And I think that that's it. The only other thing is, we're looking at for the April offsite, modifying the two days from a Thursday, Friday to Wednesday, Thursday. We're sending out an inquiry to the board. Amy is going to be sending that as part of the post survey. And I'm just going to query us to see if those dates are available to make an accommodation for that offsite.
Great. Thank you so much, Cassandra. Sure, absolutely. Yeah, could we, if you communicate to Amy to get the board's input on Wednesday, Thursdays meetings as opposed to Thursdays and Fridays, and survey all of us in the post-meeting survey, and we can get the pulse of where everyone's at? And I think that would be helpful. Thanks, Cassandra. Sure, Karen?
I'm sorry, I might have missed the conversation, but the next offsite, the February meeting? Was that February, or you said April? But isn't there a half a day in February still? Or is that off calendar?
The February meeting for... The February meeting is for the CEO/CEO mid-year assessment, which is generally with the board chair and vice chair.
Okay.
And so that will continue to happen in February for...
Okay, but that would be like here, or is it offsite? Or is it just the three of you?
It would be... Routinely, it's been the chair and vice chair of both the committee, the investment committee and the full board. So we'll use that day. And then the April is a separate meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Because I thought it was on the big calendar that we got. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Brings us to item 20, which are opportunities for statements from the public. I believe we have a couple of members of the public that would like to address us for items that have not been on our agenda. I'll turn it over to staff to recognize the members of the public.
We have two members of the public in queue, so they will have three minutes each to speak. Our first caller will be John. John, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is John Bodork with CleanEarthForKids.org, and I'm here to ask you to fully divest from fossil fuels. Harvard, Norway Sovereign Wealth Fund, UC System, and many, many more organizations and funds have all divested. What is CalSTRS waiting for? You've already lost the opportunity to show leadership, to show the world the health of children and the future of our planet is part of CalSTRS ethic. But you can still make a powerful statement as the largest public pension fund in the U.S. and turn away from fossil fuels. The fossil fuel industry has a long history of social, racial, and environmental discrimination and is absolutely a cause of the climate crisis. This is about justice. This is about doing the right thing. The burning of fossil fuels is directly responsible for the wildfires that rage through California every year. So how can you give money to those burning down your neighbor's house? How can you give money into an industry that poisons children? An industry that knew decades ago they were causing climate change and not only did nothing, they actively worked to cover it up, to deflect and deny. The state of Connecticut sued Exxon over the decades of lying over climate change. The burning of fossil fuels causes 8.7 million deaths globally in 2018 in fossil fuel air pollution responsible for 1 in 5 deaths worldwide. Air pollution is linked to dementia, Alzheimer's, and Parkinson's. There is a social cost of fossil fuels. You need to consider those losses. CalSTRS investments are funding toxic pollution and climate change. Over 2 million acres of California has already burned this year, and CalSTRS funded those fires. Fossil fuels are a bad investment for every reason. It is not only a moral and ethical choice, it is also financial. Fossil fuels are a losing investment, something you should be avoiding, while green energy and energy storage shows massive growth. Continuing with fossil fuels not only will lose money, it will fund climate change and all the disasters that go with it, like floods, droughts, fires, and hurricanes. It is not fiscally responsible to stay with fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are a bad investment. I ask you to divest all CalSTRS holdings from fossil fuels. Do the right thing to do for yourselves, your families, and the children of this planet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next caller will be Suzanne. Suzanne, go ahead.
Hello, and thank you to everyone. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm a CalSTRS member. I'm a former teacher, reading specialist, literacy trainer, BHTSA new teacher trainer, a member of CalRTA and the union. I'm also the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. I spent decades teaching children and training staff to bring our best every single day. Teachers wear many hats. When our kids are sick or absent, we fill up with them to make sure they don't miss an assignment or fall behind. We spend hours and hours planning our lessons to make sure that our lessons are meaningful and practical and fun and memorable and as enjoyable as possible. We follow the standards, and we do our very best gathering resources, meeting with parents, attending SST meetings. And if there's a child that's struggling, we get together and we talk about what do we need to do. I had no idea that every day when I went into school at 7:30 in the morning and worked late, late, almost every night and weekends, I had no idea that CalSTRS was invested in fossil fuels. Not only do fossil fuels lose money, you could have made billions if you would have divested 11 years ago, but you're harming our kids. Asthma is the number one reason children miss school and the third leading reason why kids under 15 are hospitalized. I was poisoned by pesticides used in my neighborhood on agricultural fields where I live near, or I would know nothing. I'd be so busy getting these lessons together and doing, you know, what I was doing for decades. But I had to research not just my lung condition but air pollution because air pollution knocks me to the ground. You are harming people by waiting to divest. It is absolutely inexcusable. Thank you so much to the people there that care and are working for divestment. It makes me so sad that you have not yet divested. When teachers and all of our people of CalSTRS find out, they are going to be outraged. I'm asking you to divest today. Our kids are worth it. Please divest. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. That is the... Oh. We may have one more caller. Can we wait a second? They're screening right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If anyone else dials in after this call, we will limit the comments to one minute.
Okay. Oh, the caller just hung up. I apologize. So that is the conclusion of the callers in the queue.
Thank you. And my comment, let me clarify. That caller would have received three minutes. Anyone that dialed after that caller would have received one minute. They hadn't been in the queue. I'd like to acknowledge Brian Barto, our general counsel.
Thank you. I had a conversation with Karen. So as a matter of personal privilege, I'd like to introduce you to one of the newest lawyers on our staff is Brian Sitzma. Brian's sitting over here researching every single issue you have asked me over the last two days and responding. He is special counsel. He comes to us, he has a 20-year background in public affairs, starting as an active-duty military and then working for the Air Force, and then spent some time in private practice. And now he's working with us.